From January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. I can do a roll call, please?
Mister McBride. Mister Riddle.
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Here.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Present.
Mister Castellanos?
Here.
President Ewing?
Here, sorry, we do have all board members present. All right, um, we are going to go down to three approval of the meeting minutes for October twentieth, November seventeenth, and December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Um, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Motion, Miss, uh, Board Member Hannah?
Mister Riddle, I second.
Second by Mister Riddle. Any corrections or changes to the minutes?
Uh, yes, I have. I have just one typo that I noticed in the December fifteenth minutes. And it's in section four. The first pa- four A, the first paragraph, and the second to the last paragraph. And also in four B, the first paragraph. It's just a, uh, it says June twelfth. Now, we'll be seeking retroactive approval at the June twelfth meeting. That should say January twelfth. So it says, yeah, it says June in, in three places there, so if that would be just corrected, it's just a typo.
Yeah, I wa- I had the same thing, Mister Riddle, but also, um, Mister President, I would like to make sure that our minutes reflect, um, which board member made a statement and/or a question that their name should be specifically, uh, on, attached to their statements and questions, and not just a blanket, "The Board." And I did talk with legal counsel about that.
Thank you, and we can, um, definitely make that tweak and change moving forward. So we have a motion with corrections to change June to January. Are there any other, uh, comments or corrections to the minutes? Roll call vote, please.
Mister McBride?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Callahan-Wozniak?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Mister Riddle?
Yes.
Mister Castellanos?
Yeah.
President Ewing?
Yes, uh, meaning minutes approved with corrections. Um, I will ask that any committee members, board members, or staff members, when you're not speaking, if you can please mute your microphones, it helps with the transmission. I also do want to remind the public that the Board of Education is meeting remotely after, um, you know, a consultation with, how, as I refer to it, COVID czar, as it's been deemed the safest approach, um, in order to stop the spread. Uh, we are available here through our GoToMeeting link, as well as being broadcast live on YouTube as well. And once again, if everybody can mute their, uh, mics. We are going to go out of order slightly, um, and we're going to be moving up the, uh, hybrid entry plan. And I'm getting just a little feedback.
Thank you, Board President.
Yeah, hold on one sec, so I'm going to just do an entry to kind of go and lay the groundwork, and then Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, um, I just want to, uh, for the sake of, uh, community transparency, I would just like to say that, um, that, that, uh, I, Board President, and I met, um, in a, um, a meeting to go over the hybrid reentry plan. And, uh, earlier today, and, uh, questions that I have will be outlined, and if, uh, not, I will be asking, uh, for clarification. And just would like to let the community know that we did look this over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah, um, Superintendent, I just want to state for the board, as well as those who are, uh, participating remotely, is we are going to go through the presentation. This presentation is fairly lengthy, so it'll be about forty-five or fifty minutes. Um, one thing that we tried to do, and those who've been coming to meetings do know, is we pre-record them, and we do that typically to allow us to also put it on social media, so that people can go back and look at it, um, at their own convenience. Because there were some technical difficulties with that recording, we are going to use this meeting in order to record it. So we are asking that you please, um, allow the presentation to go through. If you have questions, so that you don't lose your train of thought, uh, please use the chat. If you are participating by phone, you know, you'll have that opportunity too, so just make sure you write down your questions, because this is a committee meeting, uh, but we will hold questions until, uh, the end of the presentation. If you are participating by YouTube, um, we will be monitoring those, um, questions as well. Obviously, there are going to be a lot of, of questions, so comments are important, but we want to make sure that we answer some of the questions, as this will not be the only time, obviously, that we hear or see this plan. Um, the plan has been tweaked since the original, um, anticipated plan back in the fall, and it very possibly well could be tweaked again by the time we, um, are looking to enter the schools. So these are the thoughts of the administration, um, and they, and a lot of people who plan, uh, and are preliminary. And so, uh, as Ms. Hannah stated, the board, uh, met in two-by-twos, so that they could review, um, the plan prior to the evening, just go through. Um, there were no discussions, no decisions, no actions made. Um, it was just presented to the board and then presented to the community. And now we're going to, uh, be able to talk and ask questions, and, um, that's what this time is for. So like I said, the presentation will run about forty-five minutes to an hour. If you have questions, that is perfectly, that's great, that's what this is for. I am asking that you either write them down, or if you post them in the chat, we will address the questions once, um, once the presentation is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. Good evening, Waukegan Public School Community. Before we begin, I would be remiss if I did not men- mention that our nation hit a tragic milestone today. More than four hundred thousand American lives have been lost to this terrible pandemic. While the distribution of a vaccine does give us some hope for our future, we know that this fight is far from over. To everyone listening this evening, I want to assure you and your loved ones that as a district, we are working to create a safe environment for everyone. We will not welcome students back into our buildings if health experts and the district do not feel it is safe to do so. I want to reiterate that this is an update on our hybrid reentry plan. No decision has been made to go to in-person learning at this time. Decisions will be made based off of what is the safest for all our stakeholders involved in Waukegan Public Schools. This is, once again, just an update on the hybrid reentry plan. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to my staff, Nick Alajakis, Chief of Staff, Eduardo Sastario, Deputy Superintendent, and Laberan Molten, Deputy Superintendent, who will give us an update on the hybrid reentry plan.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent Placencia, and Board Presidents, good, good evening, community. Uh, my name is Eduardo Sastario, I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Academic Supports and Programs, and I will begin the presentation, uh, by just thanking everyone who was a part of the, the creation of this, uh, plan. Again, just to reiterate what the superintendent said, this is about the how and the what, not the when. Um, and so we, uh, are doing this, it's a tentative plan, and, uh, we look forward to the questions and feedback. I'd also like to say that, um, thank our, our, our unions, um, and just let everyone know that what's with our unions are, are ongoing, and we're still working through issues. Uh, we've been working together, and we expect these issues to be resolved amicably. So without further ado, uh, we'll go over the hybrid reentry plan now. So the, the objective and rationale here is to, uh, give an overview, again, of the how and the what. Uh, this, and to let everyone know that this plan was designed and collaborated with school-based administrators, members of the teachers' union, and central office administrators, in order to provide an overview of our reentry hybrid plan. During this planning process, we had several work groups that were working together. We had our diverse learners group, uh, our elementary, that was comprised of also the pre-K, middle school, and high school. These groups met to discuss important aspects of the reentry plan. Uh, their input was collected, uh, we also did survey the, the community, and also offered opportunities for the community to provide input, and to hear about, uh, issues that were related to the remote learning plan and future plans. Uh, and then the union leadership and the district leadership collaborated to develop tenet, these tentative plans. This next slide just, uh, gives a highlight of some of the members of, of the groups that worked together to provide input for this plan. So what we'll be discussing tonight are academics, an overview of the hybrid plan that includes structures, schedules, and, and the academic focus, social-emotional supports that discuss what's available for our students to ensure their needs are met, and that they're able to effectively engage in work. Also supports related to, uh, parent resources and families. And in our take-in operations section, we'll cover COVID-related health and safety procedures, as well as enhancements that protect our students and staff. So the next section here, we'll talk about academics, and it'll provide an overview of, of what to expect in our reentry plan as it relates to academics. In this section, we'll cover the general structure, discussing hybrid or remote, the phases of our return, sample schedules at each day level, pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school, hybrid learning focus, lesson plan templates that will be utilized as a resource for teachers, and then attendance procedures and expectations. The general structure, uh, for in-person twice a week on an A-B schedule. A-schedules will consist of students attending on Mondays and Tues- Mondays and Wednesdays in person, and a B-schedule will be in-person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. While in-person, students will be in attendance for four hours a day. All students will be remote on Fridays. Pre-K students will attend for two-hour sessions. Parents will have the option to keep their children one hundred percent remote. So hybrid or remote options. During all hybrid learning phases, parents will have the option of having their child attend in person or remain one hundred percent remote. We, again, we wanted to get feedback from parents. We opened the survey in October, we kept it open, and asked parents about selecting remote or in-person for two days a week to get their feedback. That survey, we had less than fifty percent response rate. We reissued these surveys in January, and we're still collecting the data on whether or not people are in favor of hybrid or remote. Why are we gathering input from parents regarding hybrid and remote learning options? And why is it, where we're using this information in order to put together classrooms, identify the size of those classrooms, so that everyone can be safely socially distanced? Uh, we're also using it to determine bus routes. We are also, um, going to try to, uh, we, we're not going to, but we are trying to make sure that our schedules allow for families to stay together. And one other key component to this is that those that chose to join in-person instruction last minute will not be able to do so immediately, we'll, we'll have an opportunity during the phase-in to, to come in. Uh, currently, the survey is, is still open, and we have our deadline to complete that is every twenty seconds.
You gonna go for it now? I'm sorry, if, uh, we can mute our phones or devices.
There's a QR code here that appears on the front. You can also access the survey through that QR code. Here's, uh, the phased-in return of students. And again, these dates are yet to be determined. Again, we're talking about the how, uh, and not necessarily the, not the when. So, uh, this is, week one, we have administration. That would be Lincoln Center and our safety educators. Week two, we have school-based staff. And then week three, we have pre-K, kindergarten, first and second, second grade students. Week four would be followed with grades three, third and fourth. Week five, we'd have grades five, six, nine, and twelve returning. Week six, grades seven, eight, ten, and eleven. This phased-in approach was designed in order to provide an opportunity for an additional resources to be available for our younger students, to be able to support them as they transition back to school. The, another key component to the phase-in is that it does allow us to make adjustments to transportation routes and to, uh, food service, that, uh, food service preparation, uh, in order to meet larger numbers of students. Sample daily schedules, before we get into the sample daily schedules, I, I wanted to explain the rationale of how they were, how, how they were built, and, and what we had in mind when we were building this. We wanted to keep Fridays remote, to allow for the deep cleaning of buildings. The, the primary focus here is to get students and teachers talking and working with one another in person. Um, so we want to utilize, uh, a, a block schedule to allow for, for more collaboration a- and to allow for, for more student-to-student discourse, and more time on, um, subjects. Uh, it also helps in limiting the number of transitions while, while in the building. So these will provide time between remote learning and in-person learning in order to keep consistency between different groups. So our sample pre-K schedule, we can see that, uh, we have, we still have, uh, students headed up into AM and PMs. Um, and, uh, this would be for two hours of in-person, uh, contact time. And, um, we have opportunities for students that, while not in school, to work, continue to work remotely. In our sample elementary schedule, you, you can see that in pink and in green, alternating in Group A, which is Monday and Wednesdays, and Group B, which is Tuesdays and Thursdays. Again, there are larger blocks of time, and these, I just want to emphasize that these are sample elementary schedules. There are certain schools that may have, uh, different nuances because of different programs that they have, or the size of their school, but these are a general idea of what elementary school students should experience when moving into hybrid. So they would attend for four hours, and then there would be an opportunity, time for travel, lunch at home, and then, uh, continued learning in the afternoon at home. Our middle school schedule, again, alternates between an A-schedule and a B-schedule. And this allows for students to have contact with all of their teachers at least once per week. So if we look at the, the purple section, uh, in the Group A, we see that when they, when the students come to school, they would attend period one, three, five, and seven, and then depart for lunch. Um, and then they would have the remainder of their classes in remote in the afternoon. If we go to the Wednesday schedule, those classes that they had in the afternoon remotely would then be in-person. And the class that they had in, to start with, in-person on Monday, they would then have in the afternoon remotely on Wednesdays. There's a sample high school schedule, and, and very similar to the middle school schedule. We, we, the idea here is that on an A and B schedule, alternating between a Monday-Wednesday schedule and a Tuesday-Thursday schedule, students would have contact with all of their teachers at least once per week. The schedule is slightly different only for those teachers and students that have a first-period class. And again, there may be certain nuances depending on different programs that are within, but these schedules that we've outlined are, are the general schedules that students would follow. Remote overview? If you elect to keep, it's, uh, what happens if you elect to keep your child remote? That will continue to support students and families through remote learnouts while in-person instruction is taking place. Support and instruction will continue uninterrupted. So students will also have the ability to view the classroom lessons through a live stream.
I'm sorry, if we can, um, mute, uh, mics.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna continue from where I left off, and, and that is that we're, we're really trying to keep some continuity between those students that are remote and, uh, in-person by allowing the teachers to livestream what they're doing in-person to those students that are at home. This will also, because of the amount of technology that we have, the use of Chromebooks, will also allow students who are in-person to collaborate with students who are remote in real-time, uh, and focus on, uh, the same content, and the same problems, and the same questions that, uh, are being presented to by the teacher in the, in the classroom. Hybrid learning focus. I, I mentioned this earlier in, in, in the presentation, and really the focus is on SEL, and making sure that our students have opportunity to interact, to engage, uh, with their peers, and also with, with their teachers. Um, and we want to utilize the social-emotional learning resources that we have available, our second step program, uh, our Calm Classroom, just to name a few. Um, and also, again, focus on academic activities, like project-based mini lessons, that are really involving students, uh, and, and engaging them in solving problems, and having discussions with one another. And, um, and allowing the teacher to, uh, work with, with different groups of students, uh, both remotely and in-person, all socially distanced. But focusing on, on having conversations with students, um, and having students facilitate conversations, so that they, uh, can get acclimated to, to the, the social setting. Uh, a, a lot of our students have, have been at home, uh, some of our students have not had, uh, siblings to interact with, or other students their age, and we want to make sure that this is an opportunity, uh, for, for our students to, to, to come together and to share their ideas, thoughts. So what do I mean by student-to-student discourse? Uh, it's just, it, another way for students to talk to each other and have academic conversations. So a, a turn-and-talk might be another one, or a math talk, where it's focused on the academics, but it's, it's got a social aspect, where I have to talk, and I have to respect the person who's talking, and listen, wait, uh, a- and listen, and, and wait my turn to, to speak to them and respond to them. So, uh, a- again, it's an opportunity to have students engage in conversation that's focused on, on a, on a relevant academic topic. All these activities will be socially-distanced group activities, so we want to maintain that six-foot, uh, distance, so that we are adhering to the safety guidelines, and to ensure everyone's safety. So we can still continue with group activities, we can still continue with student-to-student discourse, and collaborating, and working together, but just at a safe distance. So, again, uh, this SEL-driven lesson plans and our, our learning focus is, is really, um, incorporates the castle competencies, and you can see the, the, uh, the graphic on the side here that really encompasses cultural responsiveness, community, and equity, along, along with our, our school lessons. So that there are also a family component every month that, that highlights these components. Project-based mini lessons. Uh, students will create projects to demonstrate their understanding or mastery of a content. Uh, oftentimes, this is, uh, something that the, the teacher has developed and created in relation to, uh, the, the goals of the unit, and the concepts that are, are being discussed. So students will attend school on an A-B schedule and receive a, a new lesson with a project. They'll be able to complete that during asynchronous time and synchronous time with their peers. So again, it's just a focal point for collaboration and getting students to work together. For our diverse learners, uh, there's some criteria here that, that students, uh, must have in order to be eligible for the in-person instruction. Uh, now, we know that other cases is unique, and so, um, if there are questions a- about this, we'll also, uh, have our Director of Diverse Learners who can help to support this. Uh, but in general, this is, this is, uh, where we're at with the criteria for transitioning, um, our diverse learners into a, a hybrid, uh, or in-person en- environment. So our, our students will, um, return to the buildings in phases. So if we have students that are, are low-incidence students, that require, that are going to, to come back in when pre-ked it to two, and returns to those buildings, uh, those students will also return to the buildings. Same with when, um, our middle school students start to fade in, then though our middle school, um, low-incidence DL students will then also come back into, to the school setting, same at the high school level. Related services are going to be provided to all IUP students, we're indicating on our IUP, and the team will collaborate to determine what's most appropriate, whether it's teletherapy or in-person. In reference to the lesson plans that were, these templates that were developed as a resource for teachers, this is just a, a sample on, at one of the grade levels. Again, it's a resource that can be used to assist on the transition, that really has a heavy emphasis on social-emotional practices. So one, greeting students at the, at the classroom door. Reflecting and connecting, uh, or an SEL touchbase, mini lessons. Utilizing turn-and-talk, movement breaks, uh, ex- experiential activities, like the, the project-based activities that we discussed, and then show me what you know exits look, so that, again, students can talk with the teacher, and with, with one another, about what, what the learning focus is. Attendance expectations. Students are expected to attend school each and every day, and they're expected to arrive to school, uh, when they're in-person, on time, and if they're remaining remote, or when they are, um, in remote time, to log in at the, uh, at, on time as well. Uh, parents are still expected to, uh, submit an excuse absence and contact the attendance line and leave a message when their child is, is, is not going to be in school. the attendance line and leave a message when their child is, is, is not going to be in school. Um, additional details related to this can be found in the 2020, 2021 Parents' Student Handbook and Rights and Responsibilities. Social emotional supports. This next section, we'll, we'll just discuss what social emotional learning is, uh, what resources we have available and uh, who's here to support our students, our staff members and our parents. So uh, so social emotional uh, learning really focuses on um, developing healthy uh, identities, managing our emotions, uh, talks about goal-setting, um, showing empathy for others, establishing and maintaining supportive relationships and then making responsible and caring decisions. So our S E L framework is, is differentiated uh, by grade band and the, what is developmentally appropriate for our pre-K to two, third through fifth graders and then for our sixth through twelfth graders. Um, this uh, these plans incorporate all of our district resources such as Calm Classroom and Second Step, uh, to name a few. Um, these lessons really again focus on cultural responsiveness, equity, inclusion, community, relationship skills, decision-making, self-awareness, and social awareness. Some of the available supports that we have from our, our support staff, our in-school staff, our psychologists, social workers, speech-language pathologists, nurses, counselors, S E L counselors and, and then uh, our internal support staff, uh, M T S S, behavior and external specialists. All are here to support our, our students and our, and work together uh, to also provide resources to our, our students and staff members when necessary. We have external support staff, our A H S and B A N counselors, as well as the S E L classroom strategies that were, were mentioned earlier, Calm Classroom, Second Step and a Panoramic Playbook. Parent resources here, uh, this uh, just allows uh, parents to reinforce what's being discussed in, in school. And so there are supports here and resources or that they can use to discuss those, those ideals, those concepts uh, with, with their children at home. And next I will ask Chief Operations Officer LaBaron Moten to discuss safety and operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cesario, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. For the safety and operations overview, we're going to discuss several subjects uh, within this section. We're going to discuss health metrics and consideration the district has been using as we plan for hybrid instruction. We're going to discuss the building occupancy plans. Covid safety teams, and these safety teams will be site-based so they can address unique circumstances within each individual district facility. We're going to discuss the daily screening process and some things you may expect uh, and look forward to when we start to utilize the recent tool that the district has acquired. The entry and exit protocols for each school. Sanitation enhancements and expectations. Classroom and hallway safety. Face coverings, social distancing, hand washing and hand hygiene, as well as washrooms and water breaks. Some additional items we'll cover within this section are COVID case response. And this is particularly critical as we introduce staff back to the district. Our response procedures are going to be very specific. However, they are going to uh, be flexible and modified depending on the Restore Illinois Plan and the health metrics to date. Our impact investigations, which will involve contact tracing. Our COVID notifications, so you know when to expect a notification from the district and what it may pertain to. Uh, transportation and mill service information. And then some miscellaneous information specifically regarding technical support as we move forward and the student appearance policy. Health metrics and considerations. So for our health metric data, we've referenced this in previous meetings and will continue to monitor this to ensure that our risk mitigation factors are appropriate for the return for in-person learning and in-person uh, work for our staff. Some of the metrics that we've considered as part of this include recommendations from the health agencies, including and specifically the Lake County Health Department, Illinois Department of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control. The seven-day daily incident rate and positivity rate for Waukegan and Lake County. And the mitigation status for Region Nine, which includes Lake and McHenry Counties. And you'll notice this weekend recently, uh, we moved from a tier three to a tier two in mitigation status and we're currently reviewing that information. We also are reviewing hospitalizations and vaccine availability for Waukegan and Lake County and will touch on vaccine availability and some information there for registration towards the end of the presentation. Building occupancy plans. Every school has created a building-specific plan that includes several logistics and I'll explain these logistics in future slides. But these logistics include entry and exit procedures for all the doors that will be designated for entry and exit on a daily basis, particularly for students as well as visitors and parents. Hallway traffic procedures to ensure that the hallways are clear and everybody's going in the same direction and socially distanced. Classroom setups, again, so we have socially-distanced areas for learning. Health stations, which are going to be the locations where individuals will be designated if they present with COVID symptoms. And then the cleaning and sanitation expectations. Health stations are dedicated rooms throughout each district facility that will house individuals that have COVID or flu-like symptoms. And this could happen upon entry into the, prior to entry into the building, or it could happen while the school day is taking place. In this location, we'll do some follow-up screenings just to check and monitor individuals to see if there are any COVID-related risk factors with those individuals and make an assessment at that time whether or not they can return to class, their office, or if they need to be picked up um, and taken off the school site. We do ask that parents, guardians, uh, and the emergency contacts update information so that we, we can give you timely notifications if an individual is uh, being monitored within the health station. COVID safety teams. I do want to acknowledge the collaboration with our bargaining units as well as various departments and discussing the COVID-site-based safety teams. This is going to be extremely important as we move forward and come back to hybrid instruction. These COVID safety teams are going to be developed and they're going to be tasked with providing training assistance to building-level staff for our COVID-related safety procedures, performing building inspections as we introduce new grades as part of our plan, ensure that we have appropriate levels of sanitation materials and personal protective equipment. That inventory is going to be monitored regularly by this team as well as operation staff within the building. And just ensure that we have uh, compliance with our health and safety protocols in general by everybody that comes into the building and work to resolve those, those items as they are identified throughout the school day. I do want to mention as part of this slide, the composition of this committee. So you can see we have a diversity of personnel um, that are on all of these site-based teams. We'll have the building administrator. Uh, we'll have educational s- uh, safety specialists or other safety administration as part of this team, or at minimum, somebody with crisis intervention experience. We'll have representatives from our health services area and we'll have representation from each of our bargaining units unless it is agreed upon that one of those individuals may be uh, substituted for another team member. And we do intend to have all of these teams up and running with the specific information for their buildings a minimum of two weeks prior to student return. Daily screenings and self-certifications. The Illinois State Board of Education requires that schools conduct symptom screenings or require that individuals self-certify that they are free of symptoms before entering school buildings. Now, most recently, at the Board of Education meeting last week, the, the Board of Education approved the Crisis Go Safety iPass software. We are going to be providing specific training on use of this software to parents, students and staff members. We do ask parents of younger children if you could certify your children before they come to school. And older students, if you could certify yourselves, or parents can certify older students before you come to school. That would be helpful for this process and staff members if you could do the same. We are going to be asking, as part of the screening procedure, that temperatures be taken on a daily basis prior to arrival to school. We do encourage that individuals who do not currently have a personal thermometer, that you um, get one for your own personal use to help with this process. However, if you do not have one, we will have staff available to assist at the school sites um, to complete this process, help you complete this process. Proof of screening completion will be required to come into the school building each day. And again, if anybody's experiencing any technical difficulties or maybe experiencing some circumstances that prevent you from doing the screening, we will have staff available to assist when you arrive. Some of the screening uh, and self-certification content you might expect to see uh, when you're completing this daily screener is, is in front of you. The first one, visitors, and we'll talk about visitors and those expectations later in the presentation. But we're going to be asking visitors, with the exception of some of our emergency personnel, uh, to make an appointment, a pre-scheduled appointment. So if you're a visitor, you'll be prompted to ask who your appointment is with. We have several items listed on the screen here associated with symptoms related to COVID-19. I do want to emphasize the last three items on this screen as we go through and we do the daily screener for questions that we ask you to answer. Answer them daily, answer them truthfully, so we can ensure that staff and students return safely when we come back to school. First, do you have any fever or other COVID-related symptoms? Are you a close contact of a known COVID-19 positive case? And lastly, have you yourself tested positive for COVID-19? Again, we're asking everybody to answer these to the best of their ability, answer them truthfully, uh, so we can ensure that we have an adequate and safe return because this, this tool and this process is going to be our first line of defense before people come into the school buildings. So as part of the Crisis Go Safety iPass tool, these are some anticipated indicators you can expect to see. And you have the visual here that shows the daily process. You get a daily email and these will be timestamped. So if you complete a screener on Sunday and you come to school on Tuesday, the system will not acknowledge that. It'll be timestamped to take place that day, that morning. You'll get an email survey and we'll have a mechanism to track this uh, when younger students come on the school site, but you'll get an email survey and you will answer the questions that were prompted in the previous slide. And once you answer those questions, you'll get a digital entry badge that will be color-coded, similar to what you see on the screen. Green for entry, blue for remote staffer learner, yellow for stay-at-home, gray for non-certified, and red for quarantine. Now you'll notice on the right-hand side of the screen, um, we have the safety data that certain district employees will be using to track to ensure um, that we have accurate attendance counts, that we, if we need to utilize information for contact tracing, the, the resources will be available to us based on the information that you provide on a daily basis. So again, please provide it as truthfully as possible so that we can ensure that we're operating off of good information. And I will, in the next slide, uh, explain some of these indicators to you. Alright, so here, here's a further explanation of some of the self-certification indicators. Green means you're good for entry, that all the self-certification criteria has been met for those that are using the system. Yellow means stay-at-home, report your absence. That means that at least one of the entry criteria that you selected should not allow you access based on your response. So you will get further instruction if you are prompted to get a yellow stay-at-home digital badge. So let me give you an example of something that you might specifically get as a response for further instruction and recommendations. If you go through the tool and you select that you have tested positive for COVID-19, then you will get a message that says something like this. You must quarantine for ten days and be fever-free for at least twenty-four hours without medication. So you'll get that notice and that's a good example of what you would physically see on the screen. On the backside, we will be tracking attendance and our, our head nurse, he- health services coordinator will be uh, monitoring that information. Red for quarantine, similar to yellow, stay-at-home. That means you have at least one of the self-certification entry criteria not met and you're required to quarantine under the public health rules and further instructions will be provided. Now the blue is for the remote learners and the remote staff. So if an individual, if a student, I'll say, um, is on a B schedule and shows up to school on Monday, which is on the A schedule, and they go to complete this process, then it'll get them a blue entry badge that say, you're not supposed to be at school this day. If they are not able to complete the screener prior to arrival to school, then when they show up to school and it's done with the staff assistants manually at the school site, uh, they will get the notification there as well. We're going to ask the student to learn remotely that day so they don't miss out on any instruction and we can, we can have an accurate count of who's in the school on that day. Gray stands for non-certified, which means somebody simply forgot or was not able to complete the survey on that day and will assist you once you get to the school site. Entry and exit protocols. All schools have established a drop-off and pickup station for parents and students. There will be specific doors for entry and exit with appropriate signage and visuals. We want to make sure that we're just decreasing the sizes that congregate at the entry and exit points. Again, with signage, we'll have paint and tape for socially distant lineup areas. We do ask that visitors and parents do not use the student entry points, that they use the main office entry areas. Visitor expectations. The district would like to limit all, um, would like to limit uh, access to only essential visitors whenever possible. We do ask that individuals who are able to conduct their business remotely uh, through telephones, video conferencing or email, that you do so. We have defined here essential visitors and this mirrors what's in Board Policy um, eight thousand and two dash two zero zero one. Whereas essential visitors are individuals providing in-person professional services to students, staff and facilities. Parents with current business, which can be handled remotely. And emergency response personnel, so we can provide access to those individuals in the case we have an emergency. It might be uh, fire and rescue that needs to assist the district. We are asking essential visitors to pre-schedule appointments and comply with the, the district health and safety protocols. And again, if there's an emergency situation for emergency response personnel, we do want to make sure we can address that emergency while also working within our existing health and safety protocols. Sanitation enhancements. Water fountains will be restricted with the exception of the bottle fillers. And we will have um, safe drinking water options available when necessary. I would like to say, as mentioned in previous meetings, uh, the district purchased forty of the bottle filler stations so that we could make this happen. The goal is to have all of those installed prior to return to in-person instruction and that will complement the existing bottle filler stations that were previously installed prior to COVID-19. Um, additional sanitation enhancements is increased air movement and air filtration and occupied spaces. Several buildings have taken uh, improvements, several building improvements have taken place. Uh, while the schools have been closed with updates to mechanical systems, modifications to building automation systems to maximize airflow as well as filtration changes and surveys of all of our district unit ventilators that provide fresh air to the classroom and other occupied spaces. There will be increased opportunities for frequent handwashing during the school day per the schedule. And students will, students and staff will have access to hand sanitizer um, for their individual classroom space. Some cleaning enhancements. Some cleaning enhancements. Staff schedules will be modified and adjusted to allow for continuous cleaning throughout the school day with a specific focus on touchpoints, restrooms, and high-traffic areas such as hallways, main offices, and main entrances. All rooms and desktops will be cleaned and sanitized daily. And individual disinfectant bottles will be made available for staff use in classrooms and offices. And again, with these custodial schedule changes and modifications to ensure that we have personnel resources to be reactive to whatever situations may occur during the school day, there will be continuous sanitation throughout the day on a scheduled basis and responsiveness to situations that arise that are not anticipated. Classroom safety. So we will have socially distant classroom furniture with all student desks facing one direction. We will have dividers, Plexiglas for student and teacher desk as well as activity tables. And again, the sanitation stations dedicated for classroom use. We will remove or modify any furniture or items that historically have required a lot of touching such as bookshelves with books on them to just promote the fact that we do not want things with multiple touchpoints to be handled on a regular basis within the classrooms. And lastly, our supply kits. Right now, the operations team is working on putting together supply kits to use at staff discretion for all classrooms throughout the district as well as office spaces that will include sanitizer, gloves, mask, disinfectant bottles, and paper products such as paper towels. Hallway protocols and signage. We will have one-way circulation where appropriate in hallways, classrooms, and stairwells. We will have tape or paint on hallway floors to ensure that students are staying on the left or right side or going in one direction appropriately based on the hallway that they're in. And socially distant floor stickers in case there does happen to be a lineup in any particular hallway. As well, we will continue to reinforce best practices during this time with a lot of the signage that our print shop has been able to develop and create for us that promotes social distancing, wearing face masks, not touching your nose and mouth and eyes, coughing into your elbow, et cetera. Face covering expectations. This is something that we've mentioned in previous meetings and we are staying consistent because this is one of the most important things we can do to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The district will provide a reusable face mask to all staff and students. If staff or students choose to bring their own, they will be able to do so. However, the expectations specifically associated with face masks are that they should be worn while entering and while in buildings, riding bus transportation, and participating in any approved after-school sponsored activities. If we get to the point where we do have after-school activities that we have historically had, we will require these after-school tutoring in these social clubs and programs. Non-compliance will generally be addressed through progressive interventions and/or other consequences. And again, we may make modifications. You'll see this throughout the rant or the presentation. Modifications may be made based on the current health metrics and the current Restore Illinois Plan. Face covering exceptions. We do have a few exceptions here where face coverings will not be required. First, any verified medical reasons. So these requests for accommodations for medical exceptions for those with a disability will be reviewed and approved for this exception by the school nurse for students and the human resources department for district staff. And the individuals under the age of two would also fall under this exception as well as individuals who may be unconscious and may need emergency medical assistance. Lastly, when we resume athletics, students who are actively participating in athletic activities will not be required to wear the mask. Social distancing. So we will have a general six-foot rule for social distancing for all indoor and outdoor activities. The numbers in the classrooms of students and staff total will be reduced to ensure that we're able to enforce and abide by this six-foot general rule. The Restore Illinois Plan is critical in this as it's applicable to Waukegan. If there is an exception made that we can exceed certain numbers for any indoor or outdoor, and specifically outdoor activities, our modifications will be consistent with the Restore Illinois Plan. Hand washing and sanitizer. Students will be encouraged to continually practice proper hand hygiene when we return to hybrid instruction. We do have an additional 1,200 hand sanitizer dispensers for classroom use. And these dispensers and the product within them are going to be monitored and replaced regularly as needed, checked on a daily basis. Washrooms. Students, as a matter of procedure, will need to ask permission to go to the washroom during the school day. At the middle and high school level, students will be allowed out of the classroom one at a time. And at the elementary level, they will be given scheduled washroom breaks or as needed. And this is to assist with overcrowding and congregating in the washroom areas. During passing periods at the middle and high school, washroom use will be prohibited, also to prevent overcrowding. And students during passing periods who may need to use the restroom will need to seek permission from the teacher that they're going to see the following period so they can be provided access. Drinking fountains. Again, our standard drinking fountains throughout the school facilities as well as administrative offices will be closed. We will be asking individuals to use the bottle full of drinking fountains and disposable cups will be provided for use. And these drinking fountains will be sanitized daily and on a regularly scheduled basis, so daily or as needed. COVID case response. Now I wanted to highlight some of our COVID response protocols, which is going to be consistent with some of the feedback we receive in the daily screening, daily screening procedure that was mentioned in previous slides. You'll notice on this chart that we have four common items in the left-hand column of scenarios that may occur when we return to hybrid instruction. And then we have the follow-up actions on the right-hand column. So if a student or staff member tests positive, the individual must quarantine for 10 days, be fever-free for at least 24 hours without medication. Again, all these protocols with specific time limits such as 10 days or 24 hours may be modified depending on where we are with the health metrics and the Restore Illinois Plan. While this is taking place within this specific protocol, the contact tracer will be notified and assess the impact. And I will talk about impact investigations in the following slide. But we do have five contact tracers in the district that have been trained and certified through John Hopkins University for lead nurses as well as our health services coordinator. And these individuals have been trained to assess impact, to review, interview, and provide advice to those individuals that have been identified as a close contact to a known positive COVID case. After this takes place, the appropriate communication will be issued based on the finding. If a student or staff member is identified as a close contact, we're going to ask the individual to quarantine for 14 days and monitor for symptoms. And again, the 14 days may change depending on where we are with the metrics in the Illinois Plan at the time. We're going to enhance monitoring of any classroom or building space where the individual may have been in and provide appropriate communications again based on those findings. Next is if we have a student or staff member become symptomatic during the school day. The individual is going to be referred to the building health station where a further analysis is going to be done based on the symptoms that they are presenting at the time. And if it is suspected that they are COVID-related, then the building-level staff and the nurse is going to be equipped to make an immediate action within that moment on how to proceed next based on the protocols that have been mentioned. If a student or staff member becomes symptomatic outside of the school setting, we ask the individual to stay home and report their absence. If it's on a day where a student or staff member is expected to physically be in the building, we ask that they complete the self-screening tool so that we're able to capture the information for attendance and contact tracing purposes just as a reinforcement of that piece. And then the individual consult their healthcare provider for further instructions. Impact investigations. So again, our contact tracers, we have five in the district led by our district health services coordinator. And for the purposes of this slide, we'll also call them building impact investigators. You'll see them references both. These individuals are going to access impact levels for individuals that have been close contact with a known positive case of COVID-19. And you'll see here that we've listed individual classroom or building because depending on their investigation, there are varying levels of impact that we will be reviewing and taking their recommendations on. They will provide recommendations consistent with current Illinois Department of Public Health and Centers for Disease Control guidelines as well as our current board policies associated with COVID-related items in the 8,000 series. They will provide those recommendations to the pandemic preparedness team members for follow-up actions. And you'll note here on the slide, there are several departments that are a part of and have representation on the pandemic preparedness team, including the communications department, human resources, building-level leadership, principal or assistant principal, the health services team, and legal and operations departments. COVID notifications. So as we've made our best efforts possible to provide regular communication throughout this process, when we do return to hybrid instruction, you can anticipate seeing specifically two forms of communication. One will be notifications associated with classroom, building, or bus level impacts. And then second, and those would be more classroom, building-wide roster ride for buses depending on the information that we have. A more direct, specific, individualized communication, maybe a close contact communication for further action. And I would like to reference here that personal identifiable information will not be shared without individual consent or on a need-to-know basis in order to address an imminent health risk. Now I want to talk a little bit about transportation and mail service. For our bus transportation, parents may choose to drive their children to school on a daily basis to assist with health risk mitigation. We will have bus route information made available depending on the preference for in-person or continued remote instruction on the questionnaire that is due on January 22nd this upcoming Friday. Our maximum bus capacity for our regular bus service through Illinois Central, which would be our yellow buses, will be 18 students. You'll see on this slide here noted on the picture, we have sections that say sit, do not sit. So they will be identified for those locations. We do ask that students sit in a single seat. They will be assigned a seat when we return to hybrid instruction. The 18 students per bus occupancy may be modified depending on where we are with the health metrics, but this is our plan at this current point in time. Students from the same household may sit together or in closer proximity such as both students, both siblings per row. All staff and students will be required to wear face coverings while they're on the bus. And after each bus route, we're going to perform sanitation services. So that'll be up to four per day on some bus routes, maybe more depending on after-school activities. Requests for exemptions for students due to age limitations, medical, and/or behavioral needs will also be considered. And alternative transportation arrangements may be provided. Our pay-to-ride service during this time is going to be suspended because we want to ensure based on our occupancy limits currently that we have enough occupancy available with our bus service for those who are eligible and qualified. At the time that we no longer suspend the pay-to-ride service, we will make that notice known to our parents. And also our McKinney-Vento, which was our homeless population and our alternative placement for our diverse learners, that transportation service through our shuttle service will continue as has recently been provided. Our PACE transportation service accommodates our students at the high school level. Now you'll see a board agenda item later on in the agenda regarding this, but we have been working diligently with representatives from PACE so we're going to have a safe accommodation of our students when they return. Again, grades nine to 12 being the focus. The current capacity on PACE is 15 passengers. And we will not distribute bus passes until those discussions are finalized with PACE. We want to make sure that we have adequate transportation available for our high school students. And as we move forward through this process, we will ensure that happens. For food service, breakfast and lunch will be provided to students. And if you notice on the schedules early on in the presentation, there will be a lunch period available for students to take with them at dismissal after their four-hour school day. Because some students may be learning remote five days per week or they may be learning remote three days per week depending on their schedule, we would like to continue doing the existing meal distribution with the various bus stop locations throughout the city of Waukegan as well as the drive-through service at Waukegan High School Brookside Campus. And we will be reviewing the efficiency and effectiveness of this continued service as we move forward in our hybrid model and reintroduce more students back to the school setting. Now I would like to mention a few miscellaneous items that were not covered earlier in the presentation. Technical support. Our technology team continues to work through technical support for our students to ensure they have access to their Chromebooks and other technological resources without delay as they continue to learn remotely. And we do know that the remote learning is going to continue to be a part of our processes when we have hybrid instruction. You'll see two links here to schedule appointments at the Waukegan High School Washington Campus and Waukegan High School Brookside Campus. And the dates and times that this service will be available will be Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And again, we do ask that pre-scheduled appointments be made available to ensure we can comply with our health safety procedures and address your technological concern appropriately. No walk-ins will be permitted for this service. And we want to make sure that we're addressing the critical issues that may prevent students from learning during the remote instructional day. We also have access to information here for our drive-up Wi-Fi locations. We have 16 locations through our school parking lots throughout the district that are available for Wi-Fi use. And if you click on the link when you have time, you'll also see instructions on how to access the Wi-Fi in those locations. As a reminder, we recently updated our student appearance policy. And because we're discussing hybrid instruction, we do want to mention it here. Students at the elementary and middle school grade levels are no longer required to wear dress-colored uniform clothing to school. This change went into effect this current school year and may be relevant when we return to hybrid instruction. Students at all grade levels, elementary school, middle school, and high school must wear clothing for school that meets the expectations as outlined in the current parent-student handbook. And there is a link here for future use, so you can reference that in the rights and responsibilities section. And again, wearing face masks is specific to our COVID help and safety protocols and the current policy. Any references to face coverings, if there are references to face coverings, we want to ensure that everybody here knows that that will not be a violation of the current policy as part of our health safety procedures. We do ask, because we continue to communicate electronically, that everybody please make sure that your contact information is updated. Parents, please update your contact information when possible so you can receive timely communications from the district. You can either do this by scanning the QR code on this presentation or accessing the parent portal, which is also provided in a web link here and updating your information there. And we wanted to close out the presentation by encouraging families to register for the COVID-19 vaccine on the Lake County Health Department's All Vax Portal. Registration is easy and secure. You can register at All Vax. You can register at allvax.lakecohealth.org or call 847-377-8130 to ensure that you're able to register and you can get the proper notifications when your registration entry has been reviewed and you're eligible to receive the vaccine. And that concludes the presentation for this evening. I want to thank everybody for their time and patience as we reviewed our hybrid reentry plan.
So Board of Education, I'm going to ask you all to hold your questions. I think a lot of them will be answered as we go through some of them that came in via chat. So I want to beat those off and kind of as quickly or succinctly as possible Superintendent, if we can answer those. And then I want to open it up to the Board of Ed. What we have. So one of the first questions from MST, how can it be safe the way the plans are structured for phased in? Will there be enough information for the metrics to actually be in place and doubt if students and staff are safe? So that's related to going from the four phases to returning weekly. And so I'll put that out there to the administration.
Mr. Aljackis.
Hi, good evening. The question was relating to the four weeks versus the two stages. Is, do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
So what the difference is there is that the previously what the plan was, was two stages where you have the first stage, and we're talking about the stages in which students are returning here. So you have the first stage where it was your pre-K through three grades, and then the second stage where it was the rest of the grades. And so that, those would be coming in two large waves. What this plan does, as I think Mr. Sariyo explained, it allows a slower return to where students would be coming back several grades at a time in, over the course of four weeks. So from the time of the beginning of state of that first week to that third week, when you'd see some of the older grades, the fourth grades and up, you'd still have that two-week period, which is kind of what we were trying to commit to previously between the stage two and three, if that, if that makes sense. So it's allowing us to more slowly and more deliberately bring back students in various grades rather than bring them back in two large clumps.
And so I think for the team, going back and even from the community, is there any opportunity to evaluate the length of time between even the upper grades returning? Because I think that is where some of the question and the angst is coming from in me as well. So one week of data and one week to work out the kinks may be difficult, right? So I'm going to keep scrolling. And that's the same thing that the individual spoke to as well. And for the sake of time, I do apologize, but I'm reading questions, not necessarily statements. So the old phases are no longer.
If I can, I apologize to that point, because I think it'll hopefully answer some questions and alleviate some of those concerns. We'll continuously monitor as we move along. And if we find it necessary to pause and, you know, take an extra week before another group of grades are brought in, we would do that. We're not going to commit to just bringing back grades one after the other, after the other, without, you know, being able to fairly monitor and address it. And obviously, if we see issues, if we see something's problematic, we're going to address that by making a pause and allowing us any extra time we would need to ensure that, you know, our steps that we're taking are safe.
I also want to remind the community that we're in uncharted territory. Never have we brought back a district online after a pandemic or during a pandemic, whichever comes first, and it's going to seem. So this plan is very fluid and there's going to be questions and we're going to take it slow to go fast. I've said that before. Safety is of the utmost importance and the community has are guaranteed that that will be the premise of how we make decisions. So just want to note that a lot of this is new. This is being baked out. It has been being baked out over the last few months. I mean, as new information comes, the plan will have to be tweaked as we learn more around the virus, when the vaccination will be given, et cetera.
Thank you. So I'm going to read Sarah's question, but I believe we did address it. So the old phases are no longer. It would be more students every week with all students being back within six weeks. As Mr. Aljackis stated, that is the current template or plan, but that can be tweaked. So it's no longer the four-phase plan that we saw in the fall. Based on this presentation, they would be coming back weekly. But that can be changed if we see the need to, or administration sees the need to. At the end of the school day, are staff teachers who will need to be doing the desk cleaning or will it be through custodians? So who is responsible for the cleaning of the classrooms is what that question is asking.
Mr. Moulton.
Thank you, Board President Ewing and Superintendent. So if I understand the question correctly, custodians will be responsible, and this is going to mirror the schedule that's put forward within the buildings on each day. But the predominant responsibility is going to be with the operations team through the custodians, so we can ensure those areas are being cleaned. I believe the question might have been at the end of the school day, definitely. As we go through, they will have that responsibility. However, I mentioned in the presentation, there would be supply kits available with items for immediate use if the situation arises on a non-scheduled basis to address any concerns that may come up while staff members and students are in the classroom.
Thank you for that. We're going to keep going. So will students be provided lunch at school? This was a big one. It comes up a few times throughout. We're going to talk about it here. Will students be provided lunch at school? If so, will they have enough time to eat lunch at school, walk, or take the bus and make their afternoon classes?
Mr. Moulton.
Thank you. So currently, our plan is grab and go lunch to match the four-hour in-person schedule that was the sample that was provided early in the presentation. But it would be a grab and go lunch so they could take it with them when they leave school property and do the remote learning in the afternoon sessions.
Thank you.
Board President, sorry, just want to piggyback on to that because we're talking about lunch. I see people are also asking about breakfast. So if you wanted to go into a little bit in regards to breakfast on that.
Mr. Moulton.
Sorry, the question would just be, would breakfast also be served? Or would breakfast be served in that same type of manner of to-go breakfast? Would it be in class or how does that kind of look in regards to breakfast?
I can help you. I can help with that. Yes, it will be grab and go breakfast. We're still working out the logistics of that, where exactly students will eat and how that will look.
And I know there was a question or a comment, just, and I'll say it now because we're there, where they suggested if we're sending lunch home, would we send breakfast home as well? I know there's some logistics, but I thought that was at least something worth a conversation. Where when the students are in the building, they would be taking the breakfast home with them. And we all know it's because we've been trained that nutrition and getting our students fed is something that we as a district really fought to do, to make sure that there was breakfast provided for every student. But I get why that would be something that to consider as the plan evolves. So the next comment was from Ray. Has the teachers' union agreed to the motto of teaching the students in the classroom at the same time as the students who are at home? Many of the district tried this, and it was double the work for the teachers.
Mr. Sariyo.
Yes, so thank you for the question. These, we are, I, I, we're discussing all these concerns with the.
Apologize Deputy Sariyo. Again, if you are not speaking, if you can commute your phones, it really does help with this mission so that we can hear. So if you mute your phones, Deputy Sariyo, you'll continue. I'll read the questions in the chat. Then I know there may be some people who will participate on my phone. And then once again, if none of the questions are answered, then I want to open it up to the board.
So we are continuing to work with the union and making it easier for teachers rather than making double the work. So that's why part of the, this effort requires us to try to figure out a way where we can broadcast in the classroom and to the home simultaneously, so that teachers are not having to do double the work. We know that teachers are already facing a daunting challenge with this transition to remote learning. They're doing a really wonderful job adjusting, but we still know it's a lot of work and it's different than what we're used to. So again, that's what we've been doing. And we've been looking at and discussing this, trying to also purchase additional materials to support this. This is something that can be utilized right now for COVID and in the future for a number of instances.
Thank you.
Mr. Ewing, I'd like to interject because I got a, I have a message that a community member tried to place question in the chat, but they couldn't. And it was regarding the transportation.
Yeah, I got that same one, Miss Hannah. So I'm going to keep reading from the chat as we go down, and I will make sure that I ask that question as well.
You got the ones regarding different means of transportation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So I will definitely. So, you know, we will address those. I'm just going to, so I don't forget anybody. I'm going to keep going through, but people who are having trouble, they email, they message, so they were able to get it to me. And so sorry for anybody who is having technical difficulties. You know, but it looks like with the YouTube and with this, anybody who wanted to attend the meeting was able to do so. And we are learning as we go. So I'm going to continue for the sake of time with the questions in the comments, and then I will get those addressed. And once again, Taya, will students be provided lunch at school? And we talked about that. Those are, the approach right now is a grab lunch. And we talked about, and I'll read it just to make sure, teachers will have to create plans for students in person, live streaming, streaming synchronous learning online, and then asynchronous learning as well. For the high school students, do they still have a lunch? I guess we'll just call that out. So for high school, do they still have a lunch period? And will they be allowed to go to the cafe or what's the plan around that?
Thank you. I'm going to ask if Area Superintendent Amanda Patty could speak to the high school scheduling?
Sure. Good evening, Board President, members of the community, Superintendent, members of the board. So when we looked at the high school schedule, some of the lunch periods we were able to put at the beginning or the end of the day, and so students would have a later arrival or earlier dismissal. That didn't work for every single day because of the way the periods are ordered. And so for period four lunch and period seven lunch, we do not want to have large groups of students obviously congregating in the cafeteria from social distancing. And so during those fourth period and seventh period lunch periods that we were unable to schedule at the beginning of the day or the end of the day that would still be on a student's schedule, we'll be looking at alternate rooms for students to have a study hall built into the course of their school day so that we are looking at maximum room size capacity, providing students with an opportunity to engage in their studies and then move on to their next period of class.
Thank you. How are students going to be socially distanced during passing periods? I'm thinking of when students may have to exit their classrooms to go to lunch or to another teacher's classroom. I do believe we spoke about that in the presentation, but I just want to call it out very quickly for anybody who came on later, maybe participated by YouTube.
Mr. Moulton, you covered that during your presentation.
Yes, thank you Superintendent and Board President. So that's part of our hallway protocols to have the hallways directional with social distance stickers reinforce that. We do know, and there was a question that we discussed as part of our planning, you know, what happens if that makes students late to class in their, in the higher grade levels? And that's all things we consider. We want them to be safe and social distant as much as possible. And we'll address those individual needs as they come about. But we're going to use the floor demarcations for social distancing and one-way directional signage in our hallways as our protocols.
Thank you. And so the next one is how are students with services like speech being taken care of and their needs met?
We're continuing to serve students and outlining the, in the, in the presentation, we had the use of teletherapy and and other methods when necessary. I'm going to let Dr. Bublitz speak to this specifically. So Dr. Bublitz.
Yes, good evening, Board.
Just because there's a question that is related. The plan, the DL plan is confusing at-risk students based on criteria, go back in week one. But if they don't meet criteria, they go back the week the rest of the grade level does. So those are questions also related to how are students receiving services?
Certainly. And we'll start with the at-risk students first. And following with the phase two to phase three, we had worked with the DL Administration Group with the union representatives to look at how we're going to come back and then followed up with DL Administration on qualifying criteria for students deemed at-risk as per our original hybrid plan. And so it's outlined that students with certain criteria, including at least two of the three, so more related services would be deemed at-risk. And we would want to bring them back earlier to help get them transitioned in a timely manner and also get them services as soon as possible. And we are looking at how we are going to schedule those as well, if it will be an A/B schedule as well or each day. So we're working with the DL Department on that. Then those who are not deemed at-risk will come back just like their peers, EL, Jan Ed, DL student with their peers at that time. So the basic example is if, say, you're a fourth grade student at risk and your building K1 is coming back, you're going to come back at the same time. If you're not at risk, you will come back when your fourth or fifth grade group comes back. As far as related service, part of, one of the things we wanted to look at is making sure that we are maintaining safety protocols so that we are not having therapists go to multiple classes per day and interacting with more people or having a stream of students going to therapy rooms throughout the day. So we can continue to provide services virtually on those asynchronous times or when students are at home. We can still provide virtual services when students are in school with the therapist in their office and the children in their classrooms. They could integrate as a group as well for those classrooms and another opportunity for, say, SEL learning as well. There will be some times and some students who do not benefit as much with virtual learning and teletherapy is not going to be as effective. So we may have using socially distance, you know, the Plexiglas. We have some see-through masks for speech and deaf and hard-of-hearing students, so we would do that. Of course, we do know that there are some students that need more hands-on or hand-over-hand, a more direct approach. And I've worked with Andrea Dobbs, our district nurse, who's been working with LeBaron and his department on safety. And we will support our teams on making individualized decisions on how those services will look because all of our students are very different. I suspect it will not be as complicated as we think. And from what I've heard from other districts, students do learn very well and comply. So that is our hope. But the department will be there to support that. And we're going to leave that to those IP teams to make that decision. We also know that some parents of our high-needs kids will be uncomfortable sending them back. Some of those kids have medical issues that are going to put them more at risk for the health side than the academic side. Some of those kids have medical issues that are going to put them more at risk for the health side, uh, than the academic side. So if there's, yeah, hopefully that's clear if there's questions on those two.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Bublitz. I'm going to continue, uh, uh, with a question on behalf of Christie White regarding students that remain remote. Will it be a requirement for them to view the classroom live when their teacher is teaching students who are in person? Same, I know we broached on that, but if we can just call it out.
So again, uh, this is, but, but this is a plan we're working on right now. And so this is something that we would prefer that students do. Uh, this is, uh, for a number of reasons. Make, uh, to ensure that our students and our, our teachers are ahead of a classroom that is cohesive. Um, secondly, it's an opportunity for, um, this to, to lessen the workload for both teachers and students. Uh, so that, that's what we would like to do to have this work simultaneously. This is something that we're only going to have to see. Uh, it was mentioned earlier that this has been tried in other districts and, and, and some districts it has not been successful. We're going to see how this works right now. And, uh, Dr. uh, Quavis and myself have been working together to, uh, develop a sample classroom of, and, and to use the win trainers to see how we could best support teachers and students in this work. So, uh, right now, would we prefer that you utilize this method? Yes. Uh, is it going to be trial and error? Yes. Uh, these are things that we're going to have to work through. It's not going to be perfect. Uh, but ideally, this is a method that we will utilize in the future as well. Uh, and, and so there are going to be times when we come out of remote learning and we're back in person that students cannot be in class and a method to provide them with access to the classroom is going to be, uh, through the, the use of technology, whether it's a, a Chromebook or it's a fixed camera in a room. Uh, this is, uh, this is where we're at in the 21st century as we transition into the modern era of, um, of teaching and learning. So the answer long and short is yes, uh, we're, we're going to try.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Cesario. Um, and then the next one's, uh, all kind of related to, uh, the self-certification software and check-ins. So I'm going to lump them in together so that, um, I believe that'll be Deputy Moden can address. Um, what if students don't have a cell phone to show a digital badge? Are students Chromebook cameras activated and equipped to scan the Q R codes just in case they don't have a cell phone? Um, this one I thought was an appropriate one, uh, will this badge be required to get on the school bus? Um, and so those were kind of all pre-related, uh.
And, and, uh, Board President, can I just put my self-certifying question in there as well? Um, and then you don't have to go back to that when I ask. How will we know if, uh, self-certifying is honestly being done? Um, I mean, how, how are we going to know? Um, I understand we're going on the trust factor, but I think it needs to be a little bit more, um, solid than, uh, than that to make sure that the self-certifying is actually taking place.
Mr. Maltin?
Thank you, uh, Superintendent, Mr. Ewing and Miss Hannah. Um, so based on my notes here, there were a total of four questions and I'm going to answer them. I'm, uh, not going to necessarily answer them in order, but, um, I'm going to touch on each of them. So, Ms. Hannah, you mentioned how can we ensure that students and staff and visitors are, um, honestly completing the screening? Uh, there, there is an honor system that is part of this because we want to make sure that this process is as effective as possible and we can get individuals into the school building in a timely manner. Uh, based on the numbers with which we're, uh, considering to bring people back, we thought this was the best approach possible. So we're asking people to complete it honestly. Now, if there are any concerns with any individuals who, um, consistently based on symptoms, um, as an example, if somebody shows up to a school site and they have noticeable symptoms, but they have a green entry badge and the staff are going to be trained to address that individual and, um, escort them to the health station. So we'll have some of those parameters in place physically at the school site to help assist with, with, um, those efforts. Um, but it is an honor system and we're asking people to, um, complete them honestly. Similar to the manual screenings that are currently taking place within the school district where we ask about symptoms. We ask whether or not somebody assessed positive or is a close contact. Um, we're asking the same thing here. Regarding the, um, the younger students that may not have a cell phone, uh, we, we do the ability as we're working through this with our administration. Aim, Crisis Go and the Information Technology Department to provide individualized Q R codes for the younger students who may not have access to technology, which is with the door so that they.
So once again, if you are not speaking, please mute your phone and, um, or device and Deputy Moden, if you'll continue.
Thank you. So we will have an option for younger students that do not have, uh, physical devices such as cell phones to pre-assign them a Q R code that will, um, be used at the school level so they can scan those Q R codes at the school site. They may not be color-coded if a student is not walking in with a device, but they will already be at the school site assigned to these students so they can be scanned and they'll still be able to see the staff working at the building, whether or not the student has screened or if they've successfully completed the screening criteria. We know that is going to be, uh, a concern particularly for our younger grade levels when we start in our initial phases. And we do anticipate a lower volume of participation in this process in the beginning because it is going to be new regardless of how much training is going to take place prior to this. It's going to be a new daily process. We're all going to have to, um, adjust and get comfortable with it. And we do expect participation in this process to increase, uh, as we go through, um, the phase return week to week.
And I do apologize if you mentioned it, but, um, the one related to where they need phones, they use their own data.
If, if, if they are, if they are utilizing the, um, app service for, for Crisis Go, um, I will need to confirm that with the I T team, Mr. Ewing, but I believe the answer is yes there. Um, you also ask, and I'll ask if, um, Dr. Quavis is available. And if not, we'll have to follow up with the answer to this question related to the Chromebook camera, uh, for scanning with that particular question associated with the Q R codes with the screening process.
So those are two things that you have to follow up from those questions, the Q R code and if they would be relying on their own data for the Crisis Go.
Yes, sir. I want to make sure we're giving accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Deputy Moden. I do have a, uh, the next question is, um, in this one, of course, I don't want to speak, but just the school-based plan is where do students go when they arrive with a yellow or a red badge?
Deputy Cesario?
Yes, uh, so I'll ask for assistance from both LeBaron and the area superintendents. Uh, I believe that the health station, uh, LeBaron and, uh, and the area superintendents spoke about, or LeBaron spoke about the, the plans that were created at each site. And part of that was having a health station so that if there were, um, a, a student or somebody that needed to, to be, uh, placed in another room, that we would have another, uh, place to, to station these, these, uh, students and, and possibly employees as well. LeBaron or, or, uh, Amanda or Shani, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll add, hi everybody, it's Ms. Kealan. Um, just from every school creating their own individual plan, every school has a, a location for that. So at the separate entrances, if a student needs to go to the health station, they will get there at the quickest route, um, right? As to not bring contact into the school building, um, and then we will do the assessment and the checks from there. But every school has that set up in their own individual hybrid plan that's specific to their building, the location of that room and ventilation and how students get there from the checkpoint of door of entry.
Thank you, Ms. Kealan. Um, will, if the F D's to quarantine, will they work remotely or use sick days?
So, um, LeBaron, again, I, I'm going to ask that we, uh, work on this together. But I, I believe that if the, if the employee is able to work, uh, um, from home, uh, then, then they, they, they can, they can do so. Uh, LeBaron, um, is that accurate? I, I just want to make sure that I'm.
Yes, I can.
Cesario, I just wanted to state that, um, um, Associate Superintendent, um, Mr. Figueroa has answered that question and it is in the chat. Um, and so someone may just want to read off that response.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Figueroa, um, would you mind speaking up, uh, and, and sharing with everybody the response you provided in the chat earlier during the meeting?
A, a, absolutely. Uh, the question was if, if a staff member is sick with COVID and they request the opportunity to continue working remotely. Obviously, if an individual is sick, it has to be on a voluntary basis. So if that staff member, assuming it's a teacher, desires to continue, uh, engaging the students and with the appropriate documentation, uh, it had been proposed and is part of our intentions and negotiations with the unions that we will allow that staff member to work remotely as long, for example, a teacher is easier. There are certain subcategories of employees that might not qualify for such accommodation. But the context of the question was for teachers and the intention of the administration as it is as today is to allow this to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. And this is, will staff be allowed to leave the building in store on lunch and travel time so they can teach remote part of the day from home?
If that question is being directed to me, uh, at the present time, uh, we are not encouraging that. We believe that when we open the school district, uh, using the hybrid schedule, the expectation is that a staff will be present at the school site. The assumption for that will be individuals who have documented health conditions that we will consider following, uh, Center for Disease Control recommendations, uh, documentation available of their medical histories, uh, and we will consider that for an accommodation. But we also, we will looking at the availability of the COVID-19 vaccines in order to make those decisions. In other words, uh, if in two months from now, the vaccine is readily available and you can go to a Walmart or a C V S pharmacy and get a shot, assuming that that is a true statement or the Illinois Health Department and Lake County Authority have provide ample opportunities for the staff to get vaccinated. But then those accommodations might not continue on. But the onset of the hybrid, we do take the, uh, health and safety of our most vulnerable staff very seriously. And it had been directed by the administration that we provide some sort of consideration in terms of accommodation. And those staff that are highly risked, for example, they have a lung disease or they have one of these conditions that have been identified by the Center of Disease Control as highly vulnerable for individuals in case they acquire COVID, we will be providing those accommodations under those specific circumstances.
Thank you, um, for that one. Um, and then this may be a, a Deputy Moon question. Will staff that comes in repeated contact with bodily fluids such as when diapering have additional protective equipment? Or that may be a, um, um, Dr. Moon's question.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ewing. I can, I can answer that question. As Dr. Bublitz mentioned earlier, um, Ms. Dobbs, our health services coordinator, has been working closely with the operations department uh, to ensure that we have dedicated inventory of personal protective equipment for individuals that, that would have those regular job responsibilities. Uh, some of the, the items that have been considered for purchases as we move forward for those individuals would be items such as the clear face shields that Dr. Bublitz mentioned is where is, as well as standard face mask gloves, um, tear-away gowns that are one-time use that can be disposed of after the initial use for those individuals. So we have looked at heightened P P E for those staff members, um, and making the necessary purchases with a adequate inventory so we can ensure that we do not run out of those items.
Perfect. And then I'm going to, um, I think you addressed it, but I'm saying my note. And for Board and community members, this is the, um, question of our time. So this meeting may run a little bit long. Uh, Board, I know, uh, it will be lengthy. Administration, I know that you guys have been working all day. Um, this is probably the sixth or seventh time that some of you have presented on this information. But I am, um, built a due diligence to ask these questions. Our community is, um, nervous, obviously, and there are two sides. There are those who want students back in the classroom tomorrow and then there are those who, um, you know, do not want us to return through this year. So I want to make sure that we are taking the appropriate time to address these issues. And this is the first, um, not the first time that we've discussed reopening, but this is one of the times that we've had concrete details to be able to discuss and dissect. And so I do appreciate your patience, um, and, and for those who responded, um, to some of the questions, I'm reading them out loud because there are people who are participating by phone, who cannot read the comments or the answers. And there are individuals who are, um, watching this live from YouTube. So, um, yes, some of the questions may be redundant, um, but, but I want to make sure that we are addressing them, um, as we scroll through. So, um, as we related to who is cleaning the Plexiglas daily? Who's cleaning the desk daily? Will the paper towels be brown paper towels that really don't work? Um, so Deputy Moden, just again, reiterate, if it will be the janitors who are responsible for that and there will be cleaning supplies in the classroom as needed, is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate, Mr. Ewing.
Okay, I'm going to continue with, um, have the middle school or high school classrooms with folding tables, um. Yeah, so have the middle school, high school classrooms with folding tables, uh, been replaced with desks?
Mr. Ewing, um, in response to that question, so we're going to be assessing all of our furniture inventory for removal, replacement and modifications depending on the opt-in, uh, information that's provided as part of the, the questionnaire that's due on this coming Friday. Um, our operation team does know that this is a priority and the adjustments and the utilization of our, our existing furniture inventories will be based on that information. And as Ms. Patty mentioned earlier in one of her responses, we will have, um, appropriate furniture set up in some rooms for, uh, for study hall and other purposes. But we will, we are planning on making those modifications to ensure that we have social distance and one-way directional, um, students sitting within the classrooms.
Thank you. Uh, question on behalf of Diana Jimenez. For teachers' parents that tutor after school and live far, will they have the option to stay after N C times in order to administer their after-school tutoring on time directly after school hours? So will the buildings be open, um, for extended day for teachers who need it?
Hi, this is, uh, Deputy Cesario. I, I think that there, that we're, as mentioned earlier, um, we were talking about extracurricular activities and, and looking into those. Uh, that's not something we looked into initially, but it's something that we can consider. Uh, and it would make sense, uh, but, uh, I, I don't have a, a timeline or, um, a definitive, uh, timeframe for. for how, how late certain buildings will be open.
Thank you. And then this one, what if a student has sensory needs and cannot wear a face mask? I think that would be noted as an exception, but I don't know, you know, team, because there are other questions that I can consolidate around that, too. Is what would happen for lack of compliance with face mask wearing from either staff or students?
So, Mr. Ewing, for lack of compliance for students, we're, we're working through those, those measures so we can address it. We do know, as well as for staff, we do know that there may be occasions where somebody may be wearing a face mask, it's just covering their mouth and not their nose. It's not proper face mask etiquette. We'll address that differently than somebody that's egregiously not following our, our health safety protocols because it is very important. For staff members, we're going to provide regular ongoing training for these health and safety protocols. And hopefully not, but in the rare situation where there's continued egregious actions, we'll address them appropriately through personnel actions if necessary. But regular ongoing training is going to be provided to ensure that everybody knows what to expect, and we, we trust and ensure they will take this health matter seriously.
Will there be air purifiers in the halls and classrooms? This was also a message that I received from someone who couldn't post related to air purifiers.
And could you ask them to ask, answer if there will be hot water in all student and staff restrooms? I just got that when they couldn't get it in the chat, and it's right along what you guys talked about.
Mr. Moulton?
Thank you. So I believe that some members of the operation team are on the call that can assist with this question. At this current time, we've replaced filters and we've done analysis on our mechanical equipment in those classroom spaces and other occupied spaces for appropriate fresh air intake and air filtration. The operations team has gone through and continues to go through areas that should not be occupied for, for anybody, whether it be staff or students throughout all of our buildings as well, even though we've been learning remotely during the school year. The annual inspections by the, the Regional Office of Education for Lake County, which also discusses occupancy areas within our school buildings, was conducted early in the fall. And we've taken those recommendations and the feedback from those inspections to ensure that we're compliant when we return to in-person instruction.
Thank you. And I do know that it is, that somebody is a complex, but just, you know, as, as direct as we can be without giving, like you said, false information. And, and as we mentioned, this won't be the only opportunity. Obviously, people have to dissect the plan. But if we can answer as directly as possible, I'm just finding my place in the comments. So do apologize. Anybody, I don't think, I think that I'm in the right place, but.
Mr. Ewing, did Mr. Moulton answer the question about the hot water?
He did. I don't know if you want to explicitly state that, Mr. Moulton.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Actually, I did omit that from my response, and I apologize. So again, if the operations team is on the call and would like to supplement the response, feel free to do so. We have been analyzing that throughout all of the facilities, Ms. Hannah, for our restroom use. As the board is aware, and if some community members may not be aware, we've updated a lot of our, our plumbing supply throughout several of our school buildings over the last several years. Several issues have been addressed as associated with hot water. And as we go throughout the current process of our regular corrective and preventive maintenance tracking, we make those repairs as needed for the hot water question specifically, Ms. Hannah. We also have had an opportunity during this time while children have not been in the buildings to survey a lot of items that we anticipate may, may have some concerning points or may require regular ongoing maintenance because of historical trends. We have done surveys of all of our restrooms throughout the district just to ensure that we're being proactive in the repairs that are made so that we can focus on sanitation within the school building as opposed to some of the other more common maintenance items when we return to hybrid instruction.
So there, so is there hot water in the buildings, Mr. Moulton? Yes or no?
Ms. Hannah, there is hot water supply in the buildings, and the operations team is supplementing hot water supply in individualized locations where needed with remote water heaters.
All right, have our teachers been expected to give the consequences for mask wearing, or will it be up to administration?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, I just wanted to say that in, in any instance, if, if there's a need to, to, what I would say, just provide the, the students with, with more information or to let them know that they need to do it, the first point of contact would be the teacher. We, we know that we want to be progressive and responsive with, with, with what we're doing here because this is, this is a new situation. If something's egregious, we'll, we'll handle it accordingly. But again, if there's a student, this is a situational, you know, depend on the, on the situation. And I, I would say that, again, it's the teacher's, is the first point of contact to remind the student of what they should be doing. And with that being said, this is part of the education process in terms of orientation process, providing students and parents with, with, with information and videos prior to those, to, to coming back into the school setting, letting them know that it's important to keep their mask on, to socially distance, to wash their hands frequently. So that would be all part of that. So that was something that we would be doing to be proactive. And then in the classroom, we would want those, those points reemphasized. Laverne also discussed at length having the, the signage up in and around the building that also serves to reinforce that. So it, again, it would, we'd want to let those teachers know and talk about handling those situations. There's also going to be a teacher orientation where items like this will be discussed so that teachers are aware of, here, what do I do in these, in these circumstances? And, and again, part of that is using their discretion. But we also have to be mindful that this is a new situation where students may have to wear it for an extended, wear the mask for an extended period of time. So we, we want to also be empathetic, but also be firm and, and let, and reminding students that this is really important.
Thank you. There's a question related to will the preschool classrooms have desk?
So with the furniture, again, I, I think that a lot of that is, is being worked out right now in terms of socially distancing. And so we are going to work out spaces for those students. We know that each, especially the little ones, that they often have more equipment than some of the older students. But we also know that more equipment means more contact and, and more, more spaces where, that, that need to be cleaned and that could have items, you know, that need to be cleaned more thoroughly. So some of those pieces are, are being worked out. We're trying to really bear, just remove any excess items. Tables and chairs are things that these students would need in terms of if they're a, a single table or a double table. Those are, are questions that we're still looking at, and that would depend on the space of the room as well.
Thank you. There is a question related to the district participating in a program through the Lake County Health Department regarding vaccines for the district. I know that was addressed that we are encouraging individuals to sign up. I don't know if there's any more that you would like to respond to or add to that particular question.
Good evening. We're personally happy to handle that. So our super, our, as some people may have read in the newspaper last week, the Lake County Health Department is working to try and get educators vaccinated. And our superintendent is part of a group with some other Lake County superintendents that they're, they're kind of working in concert with the Health Department right now to figure out how that's going to be most convenient to work with educators. That's, you know, there's upwards of 15,000 educators in Lake County. And so they want to ensure that they receive, you know, their proper vaccinations and that they're, you know, their proper spot in line. So that is something that is being worked on in a, in a macro level with many other school districts in the county. And we hope to have some more information on that that we can report to our staff sometime in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Jackis. Unless I'm wrong, you can correct me, but do elementary students use the playground? That would be a no, right? Playgrounds will be closed during the school day.
Mr. Deputy Cesario?
Yes, I'm going to ask Laverne to, to assist me with this, this question. Laverne?
Yes, Mr. Ewing, that's our intention at this time. We will review that as we go on through this process as the vaccine availability is, is made relevant for our district and community and we go on further in the spring semester.
Thank you. There's a question, would a preschoolers get overwhelmed, wore mask questions? I'll summarize is if there are actual, the expectation will be that everyone has to wear that mask, and you guys are working out a plan for what happens if there's non-compliance. Is that accurate, or is there anything that you would like to add to that one?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
When will hybrid learning begin? There has been no date. The superintendent put in, opened up with the remarks, and I believe that's also in agreement with the board and the admin is that we will continue to keep safety first. So this is a preliminary plan, one that is being put out to the board and to the community. But as of right now, there's no set date or decision that has been made to go to hybrid learning. Is that an accurate statement?
That is an accurate statement at this time.
You, if teachers, are encore or other supportive staff going to be forced to sub if a classroom teacher is sick?
We, right now, we're, we're, we're hoping that we can man as many classes as possible. I think it goes without saying that there is a shortage of substitutes. And in the current environment, that, that shortage has, has increased. But that, that is not something that we want to do. We want to maintain the schedule that we've, that we've developed here. Some of those encore classes are, are going to happen in, in person, and some of those will, will continue to happen remotely. I will also ask Angel Figueroa if he wants to add to my statement, but that is not the intent. Our intent is to maintain the schedules as we've created them so that we can provide our students with a well-rounded curriculum. Angel, would you like to add anything?
No, I, I'm, I'm consistent with your statement that we need to maintain staffing levels that are adequate to, in order for us to accomplish our most important mission, which is provide an education to all the students in Waukegan Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. I'm, I'm going to keep going. As a DL teacher, and I think only because this question was answered, if the teacher says positive, that affect their safety, Ms. Figueroa stated that they're able to work, they can do so remotely. And there will be something or some person, a body to supervise their class if they are out.
Mr. Ewing, if you allow me to explain that, we are expecting that all of our staff will return to work when we start a hybrid program in Waukegan as authorized and approved by the Board of Education. There will be individuals who have present health conditions that will warrant them an exception, what we call an accommodation on their CDC guidelines and medical advice. And those individuals will be granted that exception for them to work remotely based on a health condition that might put them at greater risk than other individuals. As that risk is diminished by the increased availability of vaccines, as it had been announced by the Lake County Health Department that vaccination for school personnel will start early in February. We believe then the need and the risk to have individuals with accommodations in remote teaching situation will diminish. However, the other, the other, if we have an individual who is positive, with a positive diagnosis and test of COVID, absolutely that individual have to be removed from the school setting. They will be allowed to work remotely under those conditions as long as that is what they would like to do. We will not ask them to do so, but if they feel like they can accomplish their educational mission remotely, we will accommodate that. I just want to make sure that the public, especially any staff that might be listening to this, that the expectation is to return to work. But two classifications, individual with high risk for medical history and conditions that we can verify, those will be provided accommodation. And the second classification is anyone who comes out positive or have to be quarantined, there are other, other steps in that procedure. They will be allowed to participate remotely as long as they, their situation is, can be verified by the HR department.
Thank you. As a DL teacher at the high school, they come back the second week. All teachers then, freshmen and sophomores start back in week five and six. So from week two, when the staff come back to week five, is the expectation that teachers, for teachers who have students not returning into those later weeks, will they be working from the classroom?
Yes, we would like the, the teachers to work from the classroom. Yes.
Thank you. And once again, that's the expectation right now is laid out in the plan is that's what teachers would be in the classroom as they awaited for the students to return. Are all students going to be provided with bus transportation? Mr. Moulton, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the bus schedule will just follow, you know, our current guidelines. So if you live more than a mile or a mile and a half away from the, the building, is that correct?
Yeah, that's accurate, Mr. Ewing. We're going to stay with those same compliance measures. And again, with the 18 riders per bus, we want to ensure we have adequate amount of seats for those students who are eligible within those distance requirements from school.
And Mr. Ewing, may I interject a question about transportation since you all are talking about it? I have a question regarding our high school tech campus students and our outplace students. What type of transportation or plan has been put in place for those, those? What type of transportation or plan has been put in place for those students? And Mr. Moulton, this is a part of my question for transportation for you. Will it change the terms of our transportation contract and/or cost?
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. So as far as the terms of the current transportation contracts for the students that fall in those categories, at this point in time, we haven't experienced that nor are we anticipating that. As far as the cost considerations, it would be dependent on the students that are utilizing those transportation services for when we start hybrid instruction up until the time that we complete hybrid instruction for the current fiscal year. So that might be something that we can provide more specific information on once we see the usage for those individualized transportation services. But at this point in time, we do not anticipate, have not discussed or anticipate any contractual changes.
Okay, what about the tech campus students?
That would apply to the tech campus students as well, Ms. Hannah.
All right. And because we're along those lines related to transportation, there were questions that came in. What are the other means of transportation services are being used? Because they want to know like, will there be transportation services, cabs, Uber, or pace buses that are options for parents?
So we will have our Illinois Central Yellow Bus Service. Cabs and shuttles will be available for those students that need that alternative transportation and meet those requirements as well as those exceptions. We do anticipate students will be dropped off by their parents as well as walk to the school site. Pace is a public transportation system. It's always available for use. But again, because of their occupancy requirements at this current point in time, we are continuing discussions with them and exploring other alternatives that we may need to depend on when the students at the high school level, grades nine to 12, return.
So we would be using Pace. And then I believe the cab service, the Uber or the Pace are referencing or referring to McKinney-Bento students or the students who get that in their IEP, right? Where they have transportation services individual. So we will be complying with those.
Yes, sir. For the McKinney-Bento students and the students within the DL department that require the shuttle or cab service in and outside of the district will still be complying with their health safety requirements there. And those services will still be provided for those to meet their IEPs, as you mentioned, or to ensure the McKinney-Bento students that need those services to get back and forth from school is available to them.
And and the question about, the last question on there is what is the cost of the pace bus contract for the district? And Ms. Hannah asked this too, right? Are we expecting an increase or even a decrease as we go to the hybrid model?
So our current contract with Pace, Mr. Ewing, is, and we actually have it on here this evening at the OSC meeting is a credit of, I don't have that agenda in front of me. I believe it's around $350,000. Our contract with Pace is double that. That value is for the first part of the school year from August all the way up until today, January 19th, 2021. As we review their contract terms, I can't say definitively that that contract value would not increase for this school year, but it would depend on the use and the service they provide to us. There's a possibility that that contract may not even be utilized this school year depending on our ongoing conversations with them. So I'd like to leave that open. I can't say definitively what value we anticipate specifically for the remainder of their contract between January 20th to June 1st or later if we end up having emergency days this school year. But we are closely monitoring this. And any contractual changes with our current transportation vendors, if there are any that are proposed to ensure that this is functional and feasible moving forward outside of what we've already discussed, we'll certainly bring that back to the Board of Education before action is taken.
Thank you. Ms. Fabian, I think you said you were available for translation. If you're able to read this next question for me from Luz.
Yes. Luz has a couple of questions. And I have translated the majority of them for you as well as others who have posed questions in Spanish. So they will say to the board from
Got you. So if I keep, if I keep reading, they'll be down below.
Yes, there's only two questions that I was unable to translate because just the flow of everything was going so quick. One was, could we continue to provide fresh fruits and vegetables for lunch when the students are doing the take-home lunch? And I believe she's referring to that they are currently receiving those fresh fruits and vegetables when we do the drive, the bus stop pickups. And then the other is if the students that are at home, remote learning, are watching the teachers online, will the teacher have the ability to pose questions of those students at home simultaneous as they pose questions to students in the classroom?
Yes. I'm sorry, was somebody else?
No, no, that was fine. If you want to go, I was going to, I didn't know if you guys were going to split it up. So go ahead, Deputy Sessario.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, President Ewing. I'll, okay. So the answer is yes. So not only will they have the ability to answer, they'll have the ability to interact not only with the teacher but with other students in the class. Again, this is something that is going to be new. But as I had stated earlier, this is something that I discussed with the union and also with Dr. Cuevas. And so something we're going to approach slowly. But if we think about it, most teachers are doing this anyways. They're already broadcasting. They're already broadcasting simultaneously to 25 different rooms. The only setback, in full transparency, is the fact that the Chromebook itself has, the camera, has a limited scope, right? It can't take in everything. So, you know, while the teacher's teaching, the teacher could put that Chromebook in the back of the room at a certain place and the student would be able to see the board. But then it couldn't interact with an individual student at the same time. So what we're trying to get to is the ability to do a lot of this. And so we'll have more information. Right now, Mr. Cuevas has done a wonderful job of looking at, all right, sorry, talking too much. I'll let it go. Go ahead, President Ewing, go ahead.
Oh, you, good points. And then I know there was a question about fresh food. So will we continue? And I know Mr. Moulton talked to that. So Mr. Moulton just could correct me if I'm wrong. We will continue providing fresh fruits and vegetables. I do believe that that's through a grant at some of the buildings. And for those who don't have it, the board has stepped up and generally covers those costs so that we can do fresh fruits and vegetables. And we will continue distribution with our bus schedule. Is that accurate?
That's correct, Mr. Ewing. It's our intention to continue the fresh food vegetable program for the grab-and-go lunches as well as the current distribution setup with the bus stops and the drive-through service.
Yeah, so the rest are all questions related to lunch and lunches and breakfast. And I think we've addressed those. It'll be grabbed. And we did take one suggestion to at least look in is if we actually send the breakfast home with the students. And that's something that will be discussed as the plan is continued. Once again, more mask questions. I think those have been kind of addressed as same as right now. The expectation is that everyone has a mask. I did receive a question that I want to put on the radar is from Compliances. Deals with that accountability where, right? So who's responsible for ensuring mask compliance at the building? From students and from staff? There were some staff who just had concerns that when they go into buildings now, fortunately, unfortunately, yes, they are not occupied, but people aren't wearing the mask properly. And I believe Mr. Moulton talked about that too, right? It's not covering the nose or being fully worn. So what is being done to ensure compliance with that from staff?
So, Mr. Ewing, from a, and thank you for who asked the question. The site-based safety teams, it's going to be made up of several administrators as well as building-specific staff, certified and 12-month staff, are going to be provided the tools needed with certain levels of authority as it currently exists with our line of responsibility board policy to ensure that that compliance is being met. Again, one of the responsibilities of that team is going to be to provide training, to ensure staff have completed the training so they know what to expect and how to appropriately wear the mask specifically. And again, if there is egregious act where individuals are not wearing a mask per the line of responsibility policy, that would go to the building leader, the building principal, or an immediate supervisor. If in fact, the building principal, for example, is not compliant, then it would go to their supervisor in one of the area superintendents. So we want to ensure that we're staying consistent with existing board policy for line of responsibility as well as addressing the serious nature of the health risks associated with the not wearing of the mask or not wearing of the mask appropriately. And we do have provisions where we can escalate those scenarios if needed. And that is something that we collaborated closely with all six bargaining units on as well as fellow administrators to ensure that we had uniformity and the understanding of that process.
Thank you. The next question, I believe it was addressed, but I do want to call it out. How will live streaming in the classroom? The expectation right now is that they will be using their Chromebook. But is there something, you know, have we looked at other technology or is that something that we are willing or will explore?
Deputy Sessario, do you want to refer this to Dr. Cuevas?
I'm sorry, President Ewing, I just heard the technology part and then it cut out on my end. Can you just repeat the question, please?
Yeah, so I think is it accurate to say that right now the expectation is that teachers will utilize their Chromebooks? Or teachers don't even have Chromebooks, they have laptops? Laptops, MacBooks, right? So the expectation is that they will use those to stream?
That is the expectation right now. And again, that is, I've stated it before, we haven't discussed this with the board and we haven't shown the board anything related to this yet because we just haven't had the time. But Dr. Cuevas and I have been talking about it over the last couple of weeks. And we're looking at different samples of tools that we can use. I don't want to, they vary from cameras and mic, wireless mics and some other items. I just didn't want to go into further detail without briefing the board about this. But these are pieces that we're going to bring to student achievement, to a future student achievement and to discuss its use now during the pandemic and then the potential for long-term use in the future.
Thank you for that.
Hey Brendan? Brendan?
Yes.
I got three questions that I've done ones I'd like to give them in. I got to go out to work, it's snowing. So I'm going to have to leave you guys. A simple question, some of them you can halfway answer. But the one question I would just like to know, how is it being implemented for social-emotional issues that parents are having with their kids? Now, how are we implementing support for the parents and stuff? How are we doing that?
Thanks, that's a great question. So we're continuing with the same resources that we've been using in remote. And we're going to continue to use teletherapy. However, if we need to do conduct any kind of support, then there will be a possibility for utilizing this in person. But doing so, again, in a socially-distanced manner and abiding by all the guidelines that have been established. So we're continuing to use the support staff internally, the supports and resources that we have in Waukegan, in Lake County, and then our additional partners that we have.
So that's how it's being implemented now? I'm answering the question because I'm answering the question because I know a lot of our kids are falling back because of lack of support at home. And then some of the other dysfunctional things that's going on where
Yeah, right now, it's mostly teletherapy, Mr. McBride. Right now, we're limited to really, just again, trying to be as safe as possible. We're limited to the teletherapy that we can provide and the additional resources that are available through our district personnel. But most of it is teletherapy.
And so, Mr. McBride, you say you had two more questions?
Yeah, another question was, with our pace transportation, are our kids associated with the public with the pace transportation? Or we have, the pace buses are just private that we, that picks our kid up?
Mr. McBride, the pace transportation service is for public use. Anybody who has a pass to ride or pays the fare on that given day. What we do is we issue passes to our students at the high school level who are eligible. And under normal circumstances, they would share the, those buses and that transportation service with general riders.
Okay. And then I think the third question, then I'm done. And that was you mentioned you've got remote, well, you have water fountains throughout the school district. Are they remote or are they touchable to use?
The bottle filler stations that we have purchased and have been installing, they have a hands-free option to fill the bottles with. And these complement the bottle filler stations. If you all recall, the wellness committee made this a priority, I believe it was maybe two years ago, where we had these bottle filler stations at every facility. Those remain intact. We continue to do regular sanitation and repairs, filter changes on those. But we added 40 additional to the inventory strategically throughout the district.
So you have to, you have to actually physically touch them to get the water out?
So, Mr. McBride, they have two functions. One is a push button with a spout and the other one is a dispenser with a water filter. So we're going to ask everybody to use the water filter option for that so they don't have to touch them.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, good night, everybody. I'm going to try to keep you all safe in that respect from the snow.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. We're going to keep going. What is the status of paperwork being sent out to the teachers for their $50 reimbursement for supplies and monthly reimbursement for Wi-Fi and cell phone? Nothing has been received yet.
Good evening, Board President. This is Ms. Alan Jackis. I'm working, we're working, our office is working with the finance department. And Ms. Polk has put together some communication on that. And that should be expected in the next few days.
Thank you. Will be, will the teachers be required to be at school all day if we're only seeing kids for four hours? So I believe the answer to that is that yes, right now, based on this plan?
Currently, the answer is yes, yes.
From Karen Pontu, maybe give students the breakfast, right? So we mentioned that. I'm going down. This one, I believe, I'll read it, but the staff have the option to work remotely. Ms. Figaro addressed that now a few times. So that one has been asked and answered. Expectation when we Uh expectation when we go to hybrid would be that it was in person unless um there is a um issue or health concern, uh verified severe health concern and or um you're forced to quarantine, in which case uh you can work remotely.
Can I add uh add on to that? This is a similar question. Uh what is being done in anticipation of teachers that will resign rather than return when we uh already have so many open positions?
Ms. Hannah, can you state your question again, please?
Yes, what? And this is um I'm asking a question for someone. What has been done in anticipation of the teachers that will resign rather than return when we all already have so many open positions?
I'm so confused. What is the question?
The question is
Are you asking what we will do?
Yeah, so is there a plan to combat, right? Well, we've seen the other districts are mass uh retirements, right? Uh FMLAs, so if there's already a teacher shortage and we already have vacancies, what preparations is the district making um to deal with that?
Yeah, um so I can tell you that we can just keep recruiting, we're trying to recruit subs. Um we're hoping that our transition is a smooth one. Um just as I believe that it's been very smooth since we closed school. Um of course, we had our ups and downs with remote learning, um but our staff has stepped up to the challenge. So we're looking to collaborateally, and as I stated once before, safety is our main priority. And I believe if we continue to put safety first, we will minimize a lot of that.
And that kind of goes to the next question with people and uh people are asking whether student teachers and parents uh will be a priority for the vaccines um before returning to in-class learning.
May I respond to that question, Mr. Ewing?
Yes.
The ans- the answer is that uh the way this has been structured by the Lake County Health Department like in other counties and states is that it's not just the teaching staff. It's all the district staff that is supporting education. So in that sense, I'm an eager uh person to get that vaccine as soon as possible, as there might be many. I'm not in a teaching position, but all the district staff will be able to compete for those vaccine as soon as early February.
And to to add to that, Mr. Figaro, if I may, um it's our understanding that um individuals like that work for transportation or food service companies that we contract with would also be eligible. Though they're not technically district staff.
Thank you. A- and and a large part of this plan, Superintendent, because I think it just leads to um other questions down below. A large part of this plan um is going to be based on the science and looking at what's going on with the vaccination as well as the transmission rate in Lake County.
Can we um ca- can we get to some of uh board member questions? I appreciate um every question, and I wish we could figure out some way to uh get all of our questions that has been posed uh this evening. Um to have their questions answered um in in some type of um some type of correspondence. Um for
Only because of the, I know the board um questions may go a little bit, and because a lot of them are duplicative. I'm going to try and go through them as quickly as I can. So again, admin, I know some of them are complex, but if you can be as direct with your answers as possible. And then I do want to reserve the time for the board, um just because I don't want to miss anybody and I want to honor those who've tuned in as well as the board. I don't want to have to go back and forth because sometimes when we do that, um things get lost uh or I forget. So I do understand, Ms. Hannah, and I want to get to them. So the way that we do that is um by getting through these questions and saying for the education, this goes a blip in there. There are still ample times and opportunity for us to be able to ask questions um and or get further clarification on what's been presented. This is not the only opportunity that we will have. Um and so I do want to remind us of that. Uh no decision has been made when we go back. We're just getting the information from the administration right now. Um and this is an opportunity as a first look. So these questions are great. They will help us guide the plan, but this is not the only opportunity that the board nor the public will have to see the plan. And so I do think that these are great questions, but even with the board, um there will be other opportunities. Um some questions were asked in the two-by-two, some questions have been asked by email, and um the administration will be answering and responding to those questions. Um so
Yeah, I yeah, I just want, like I said, in my two-by-two, I'm asking questions that I'm sure that uh everyone on here would like the no answers to, uh just like I do.
Right, so are there any questions that you feel are not in the chat that you want to ask right now?
So I want to know about, yes, I want to know what they're gonna do about um about student uh attendance uh compliance. I want to know about um about new teacher trainings. Um I want to know how many students are gonna be in a classroom. Um I'd like to know um uh how will, how will
Let's pause there, Ms. Hannah.
Okay, what, and this is one very big one. How would students be notified of these processes and expectations? And uh that's a really important one to me because we as adults are hearing all of these. But our students are the ones that are going to be affected by everything we adults are talking about. So how are they gonna know about all of these things?
Nick, uh Mr. Al Jack, it's will you talk about the communication plan? I know you have a Facebook Live event planned um at the upcoming week. Um can you just spend a little bit of time talking about the communication plan? How we will engage all our stakeholders, students, parents, and staff?
Absolutely. So the the Facebook Live event, that's actually part of a series that we do. Uh we try to do those fairly regularly to answer some of the questions that we that come from the staff and families and students uh in terms of communication for this plan. So this isn't going to just be something where we start school one day without further communication. We have plans for uh another handbook that's gonna answer a lot of questions. We also have plans on some of the, we're working on some videos just to kind of help people who may be more visual learners. On, you know, some of the basics, the basic expectations. So that information is going to be shared with with our families and with our students. So so they understand, you know, what this new um hybrid learning is, how we expect them to go about it, how they can ask questions that they might have and and how we're there, you know, as a school district, two thousand-plus employees, how we're there to support them, where they need that support. That's our intention, you know, every step of the way to uh try to differentiate some of the communication that we do because we know i- it's different than how we're usually bringing students back. I mean, you uh and we recognize that and we want to try to address that.
So what will the new teacher training be? Um if there's one of plans for teachers who haven't actually been in the buildings yet?
So uh we're currently already working on orientations for all levels. Uh and those levels include the administration, uh faculty and staff, and then uh teach our students as well. Um those include the um the the hybrid plans, the i- in in logistics for each unique building. So where the health station is, uh how do I enter, how do I exit? Uh where what are the classrooms look like? Some of those are some of the questions that'll be answered. Um and we also want to share the videos for um, you know, the the health videos that were mentioned earlier um regarding wearing a mask, washing hands, socially distancing, some of those things. Uh those will all be um separate orientations. That's what we're calling them, orientations. Um so um tha- that's part of where we're at. And and we we think that it's important that students know uh echo the sentiments that were shared uh by uh board member Hannah, uh and that the students should be able to see and know, as well as the parents, right? And and uh everyone wants to know what to expect before they get there, and that's what we're working on right now. Um this isn't something that that uh we just started. We we've started this months ago um because we knew that the the time would come uh at some point, and we wanted to be prepared. So some of these videos were recorded by our staff. Uh some of them are available from the CDC and from other uh health agencies. Um and then obviously, we have uh local pictures of of classrooms and hallways in our buildings so that we can um share some of the hallway protocols that that were were shared by uh she uh Deputy O'Baron. And uh and and then just again, uh where do we, where do we line up? It, how how do we know where to stand? What what measures a social distance? So uh there's, there's a lot more detail that goes into it, but those are pieces that we're currently working on right now.
Thank you. Um and the last question was about attendance. How are uh we going to be ensuring compliance with attendance?
So the attendance, uh there, we're gonna continue in the same manner that that we've we've been doing. And and uh obviously, if when we're moving into in-person, we'll we'll utilize the same process that was utilized uh prior to the the pandemic uh for that students have to be in uh in the location that they're supposed to be in uh at the appropriate time. Uh and then again, referring back to the the slide that a lot of those guidelines are spelled out in the Parents' Rights and Responsibilities. Um I don't know if Eric Christiansen wants to add on to that, uh but uh essentially, that's that's where we're at right now with with the attendance piece.
Thank you, Mr. Sessario, but yes, um attendance will continue. Um it would be split between in-person attendance and remote attendance. Remote attendance would continue the same way, where students be expected to participate, and the participation will be marked for attendance. And students that are in class will be marked absent or tardy or present as as in the past.
I have a question.
Okay, sorry.
So people can, or students and families can elect to be remote. When do they get the option to say, okay, now I think I want to go back to in-person? Or or if they're in-person, they can, when do they say, I'm sorry, this isn't working out for me, we want to go to remote? Is that daily, weekly? What do they have to commit to?
So uh that's a great question. So um if if they're going to commit um to to coming and then they decide not to come, that's their right not to come, right? We can't, we're not gonna force somebody to come. And if they go, we can't force them to stay either. Um and you know, I I mean, I I I I think that it's important that we're honoring what families uh and and how students feel. Um with that said, I would ask that anybody who does commit to coming that they 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 give it some time, right? Now, to your other question about if I if I opted for remote and I wanted to to come back in, when do I come? We're thinking right now, it it couldn't be the next day. There are some logistics that have to be worked worked out. Uh two of the big ones are transportation and um the the classroom itself. Uh why the classroom? Because right now, we've selected classrooms based on the number of people we can have in that room. Um so we're thinking it'd probably be a week to two weeks, but we haven't narrowed that down. But we do want to provide opportunities for people who want to opt in to opt in. Uh and of course, on the other end of it, if people don't feel comfortable, then w- we we cannot, we don't want to force people. We want them to make that, we want to make them feel comfortable. This isn't, we're not designing this to um to force people back into the situation. We want to do so safely, and we want to, we want to, we want to do so in in order to re-acclimate students, teachers, faculty, staff members to to the learning environment. It's going to be a a huge shift for people. We've almost been a year uh working in our joggers in our in our living rooms, you know? Uh it it's, I I'm saying that in jest, but you know, i- it is, it is a shift to to go from being able to roll out of bed and work at your desk to having to get up at a certain time, make it to the bus stop, and then get to school. So um we wanna, we wanna, we've designed this with with um trying to make this as slow a transition as possible uh to to really meet the needs of of our our faculty, our staff, and our students and parents. But uh yes, there is, there is choice. So um and if there's concerns, we we want our our parents to to let us know and and to 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 stay in communication with us.
I have another question. Um when we started this, we said we would give two weeks' notice before we would bring anybody back to in-school um to into in-school training or working. But with the one week, one week, and adding more students and more students, and we said that if it's not working out, we would put a halt or slow it down, that's not two weeks' notice. And parent people have to plan. How? Do we have a option for that?
No, I believe the ideology here is that we will give a two-week notice that we are shifting to the hybrid model. Um and so that will get everyone, um some people after that two-week notice will not start two weeks after that. They will start based off the um schedule that you've seen. Um Deputy Sessario, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that's accurate. That was, you know, that two-week period was uh for when we're going to remote. And this phase in is, that's why we're we're talking about it right now. And again, just to reiterate, we're we're not talking about the when today, we're just talking about the how and the what. Um but you know, to to your point about the two weeks, we would give everyone notice that this is what's, you know, for for parents and students. Um this is the amount of time that you have to get ready, but then knowing that it would be a week-to-week phase in, depending on where your student was, uh what grade level they were at, rather.
But my my question was more about, okay, so we we brought back week one and week two and week three, but we're deci- we're overwhelmed. We're not, we need to reevaluate, we need to slow down and um not bring back week four. But they're not going to get two-week notice that they're not coming back.
I hear what you're saying. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, was somebody else gonna say something?
But it it, Mr. Sessario, I'd be, I can, I can sort of take this, so Callahan Wasak, if I'm incorrect here in in what I understand you're asking, please let me know. So one thing that we stated from the beginning, or we tried to state, is that we want to give ample notice when we're gonna make changes that maybe they may bring students or staff back. However, we know due to how the the virus works, due to the spikes that we see, that we can't always give a two-week notice when things need to be pulled back. Schools were closed essentially with a twenty-four-hour notice around the state. And so we know if we're gonna be bringing you back, we want to give you ample notice. We know that uh, we also know that because of the nature of coronavirus, something may occur in which we need to quickly halt, similar to how we did with our staffing levels in our buildings back in early November. When we started seeing that daily incidence rate up near one hundred twenty, and we wanted it down in the teens, we had to quickly halt and uh allow staff to go back working remotely as much as possible because that was the safest thing to do. Does that kind of make sense?
Um and this is Ms. Leguizamo. I have a student that's listening in on this particular topic, and they just wanted to ask really quick, um if they do choose to go in-person. And they just wanted to ask really quick, if they do choose to go in-person, will there be, wait, hold on, sorry. If we choose to go in-person, are we going to be let know how many people are in the class to know if they feel safe or not? So they're wondering if, will they have the opportunity to know how many other classmates they'll have in seat?
That's a really good question. And right now we're still putting together the, collecting the data on, on the families that are coming, trying to keep all the, the A schedule and the B schedule together. But that is, thank you for bringing that up. And please relate to the student if, if they are listening. That was a wonderful question.
Hey, Laura? Yeah. Sarah, do you mind if I, if I try to take a quick stab at this?
Of course.
Thank you. So that's, that's actually a question we received a lot, is what is this, what are the size of our classrooms going to be? Now, we obviously don't know every classroom because we don't know the amount of parents who are going to be opting in or not opting in. One thing that I kind of tell people is what we saw both in October and now in those questionnaires we're sending, is that less than 40% of our families, less than 40% of our parents are opting to send their children to school in a hybrid model. So if you consider a 25-person classroom with 40% of the students participating, that's 10. Now you take that, an A and B schedule, half on one day, half of another, that might be about five people in-person per day. That may not be necessarily how it looks, but that's how you can kind of do your own math on it, knowing that each class is going to be different, class to class and school to school. But if 40% continue to opt in, classroom has 25, that's 10. Half of 10 is five per day. Precise, around there.
Thank you, Mr. Al Jackis, because that's what the question that I asked about, how many students per classroom?
Yeah, right, and that's, again, that's not a scientific answer to everything. Mr. Christiansen could break it down much better once everyone turns in those forms, which is why it's of paramount importance for parents who have not yet turned in that form. Please turn it in because it's going to allow us to build these, build out these classrooms and answer these questions that are very important to parents.
Yeah, so Board of Education and Community, I think I mentioned it before. This is not the only opportunity that will be had. There are a ton of great questions, but we literally have no exaggeration, at least 55 or 60. And we still have not gotten to the Board of Education. My recommendation is because the plan is now out and we have had time to dissect it. We have questions that we want to ask. Some board members have even already sent questions. And I'm sure after further review, we'll have further questions. It's 9:00 PM. We are three hours into our first meeting. And I want to honor and not rush through the remainder of the questions as well as the board. So with the concurrence of the board, the other two items that are on the agenda are there. They're presented, they're pretty self-explanatory. So it adds that they're just there for information and we avoid the presentation. And that the superintendent agreed to answer the remaining questions that have been submitted during superintendent time at our upcoming meeting on Tuesday. So, Mr. Riddle?
We can also maybe get a Q and A out to the public and post it on Facebook. But I'll reach out to you to find out the best manner to handle that in. And we will also leave the operations component of this meeting just for information and come back with anything crucial that we need to, to connect with the board on at the February Student Achievement Meeting.
For the Education, we are able to capture all of the comments that came in. I had a few that were just to be insane, as, as we discussed, there are more questions. And so out of respect for your time, staff time, and community members' time who've now held on for a three-hour meeting, that is my recommendation. Do, is there anyone who objects to that recommendation? And as I said, it's not in, in community. We are not doing this next week. It hasn't been determined that we are doing this in February. That decision has not been made. So we have time to discuss. This was a preliminary, it was an opportunity for us to discuss, it's an opportunity to get feedback. And this is the only thing that matters right now. So we have to talk about it at every meeting. We will, and we do. And with that, Superintendent Placencia, prior to us kind of making sure that we close out for OMA purposes, we do, will need to at least have the meeting for operations. But there's not much to review. So I'll open it, but Superintendent Placencia.
Yes, thank you. I just, I want to reiterate to the stakeholders of walking in public schools that this is a, a glance at the plan when the transition is to take place. This is not a stance that we are transitioning back to remote learning. And I want to make that very clear. I want to continue to ensure that all of our stakeholders know that safety is our bar top priority. And we want to ensure that our staff and our students are safe. And I just wanted to close with that. I'm glad that everyone got to see the plan. We will get your answers to your questions available whether either through Facebook or during superintendent time. And we will circle back with the community. And please look for more information and more opportunities to engage in the plan that the team has created. I'd also like to take this time to acknowledge all the team members that worked on this plan. Really made it individualized for every student and it gives some options of choice. So thank you for all your hard work and everything you do for walking in public schools.
With Board of Education, I know just for next week's meeting, we've gotten some great questions. Like I say, a lot of them, the questions that I had were addressed in the chat. But please take this week, by Friday, because now we know that this is going to be during superintendent time, and get those questions in. And that will allow them to very quickly, efficiently, and effectively kind of answer the, the questions that we have now. And that's not saying it won't lead to more questions, but at least they come into that meeting. Like I said, we already got 60 that we got to get through, plus the ones from the board. I don't want to, you know, Lucy, how many did you submit earlier? So those are really important. And so to those who stuck with us for three hours, thank you, right? This, this is the topic. This is the only thing that matters in District 60. So the other items that are on the agenda are important, but they are there for information. Board of Education, same thing. Both of those individuals will be at the meeting next Tuesday to answer any questions that the board has. Steve Garry as well as Mr. Harris. So, you know, review that information and saying, get those questions in. And then if you have any questions for either of those two gentlemen, you can ask them at the next meeting. With that, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Riddle, I so hope.
Motion by Mr. Riddle. Second by Ms. Wazniak. If we can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wazniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. McBride? President Ewing?
Yes, he's adjourned. I'm going to ask Board of Education that we get the other meeting pulled up so that we can convene another OMA because it was legally posted. And then we will very quickly look at the agenda. As long as there aren't any questions, we will be closing out. So with that, I'd like to call to order the Operations Services Committee meeting for January 19th, 2021. If I can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. McBride? Mr. Ewing?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wazniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
All right, we are now, we go ahead and get the minutes out of the way. So approval of the meeting minutes of December 15th, 2020, Operations Services Committee meeting.
Mr. Riddle, I saw a move that we approved the minutes as stated.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Wazniak. Any comments, corrections to the minutes? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wazniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Sorry, Ms. Hannah, they had you on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Ewing?
Yes, minutes approved. As I mentioned, those items have been submitted for information. We have the Business Financial Services Presentation, Treasurer's Report. We have the Schedule of Investments Report, Student Activity Report, Child Nutrition Grants, which was there for information, Pace Transportation Credit for the 2020-2021 school year. We always like credits. That's there for information. And then we have G Alternative Placement Officer Reclassification, which there's attached information which explains what that is and why that will be brought forward. So if there are no questions on any of those items?
I, I have a couple of things that, but I'll just send them to Ms. Polk.
And that's related to which one, Charlotte, just for the record?
The Financial Services Presentation and the Treasurer's Report.
Okay. And I will then do, so any other questions related to any of those items? Like a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Leguizamo. Any comments, questions on the motion?
Just a quick question on that Alternative Placement Officer. I guess I should have asked that. That's under a grant, is it, that we're getting, we're, we're paying that particular truant officer more money? Is that correct, that last item, G?
Yeah, wait for Deputy Moulton.
Mr. Moulton?
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Riddle, that is the TAAP grant that was presented last summer with Ms. Tate and Dr. Hillary. That position is funded by that, that grant, the truant, truant alternative grant.
Okay, and, and let position continue after that grant runs out? Or we're just hoping it continues indefinitely? It can be refunded, is that, I guess that's what I'm asking? Or would they go back to being just a, the pay of a normal truant officer?
And do, and let me, let me piggyback off that. Do, are we still getting TAAP fund, funding? Are we still getting that grant?
We are still receiving that grant.
Mr. Bolton, if you would like for me to respond to that question?
Yes, is this Ms. Tate?
Yes, it is. The TAAP grant has been in the district for, for many years now, over 15, 20 years. We are still getting that grant. And it's a continuation grant. We are in our third year of receiving TAAP funds. This year we receive, well, for this term, grad term, we received an additional about $60,000 for Tier One Intervention Programs and Active Services to Students. So yes, we will continue to receive TAAP grant. It's a three-year period. Once the period runs out, we will continue with the TAAP program.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just brought it up the way.
Polk, I want to add, we've had that grant as long as I've been in the district. We, we just got an increase in it in this last year.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And so thank you all for that. We had a first and a second on the floor for adjournment. So with that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Ewing?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Wazniak?
Yes.
Ms. Leguizamo?
Yes.
Mr. Castellanos? Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
So we lose you, aren't we? All right, meeting adjourned, so thank you all. Appreciate the community. I do, I, people know we go to 10 or 11, but with all the information, I would rather us take a break and be able to come back and address the questions. So thank you, Board of Education, for your dedication. Thank you, community, for sticking with us. And we will see you all next Tuesday. Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.